Okay, we got a couple other little microphones hanging around. Hopefully our audio will be better today. We'll get started in just a moment.
Have everybody get their cameras on.
Yeah, I hear something somewhere, Todd.
I think it's coming from Odin's couple, couple second delay.
Okay, we're officially kicked off. We'll do a quick sound check. Everybody, everybody gonna check in? Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
I continue. Councilmember Foliar?
Hello.
Okay, you're nice enough. Uh, councilmember Dusty Kurtz?
Oh, present. Yes, I'll change that real quick.
Councilmember Seavers, can you hear you?
Present.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, uh, if you guys, um, either on council or in the audience, um, hear anything unusual sound wise, go ahead and just send a chat to Todd and he'll help us fix it. Okay, so welcome to our Tuesday.
Can you hear?
What, you still have some reverb?
Yeah, he's still getting, he's still getting feedback on Odin's computer.
Mayor, what's this say?
I get the pleasure of hearing you twice.
Well, that was good.
Testing one, two, three. Councilmember Langford, can you hear me?
First.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Dusty.
Get down to some business. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 5th, 2021 city council meeting. This is our six o'clock workshop. Governor Inslee's order 20 dash 28 dash 152 regarding the OPM A remains in effect. It requires public meetings, hearings to be held remotely with the option of also holding an in-person component to the public meeting or hearing if certain conditions are met. At the present time, the City of Liberty Lake has determined possible in-person components to the public meeting or hearing. Uh, so we are going to go ahead and get started with our 6:00 p.m. workshop, finishing up, hopefully the final pieces of the council rules and procedures. All right, well, let me do a, now that I think we've got all seven here, let me do, do another quick, um, attendance check here. Just to jump in, councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember Seavers?
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Present.
Councilmember Langford? You're on me, but since you're here, I can hear you. All right, um, councilmember Langford, Tom?
Present.
Sorry. It was weird. I couldn't hear you over the microphone though. All right, um, councilmember Foliar?
Here.
And councilmember Dunn?
Happy to be here.
Okay. Councilmember Dunn, are you, uh, there you are. Sorry, I, let me move you up with everybody else so I can see everybody. All right, so me, better meeting management tonight as I do, I am plugged into a power cord this time and, um, I can see everybody. So we'll go ahead and we are starting tonight from where we left off with section seven of the council rules and procedures. Hearing procedures. I don't think we will be too long tonight on this having reviewed it again. There weren't a lot of additional updates from when we, we visited this section the last time. So Todd, let me make sure you, um, scroll up to section seven on what you're sharing. Down. Okay, oh, there we go. Public hearing procedure. So I'm going to go through kind of paragraphs by paragraph. Um, on seven point three, we learned to sign in. There were no additional changes from the previous several meetings. We just clarified whether or not, um, someone was a resident of City of Liberty Lake proper. But I'm, unless somebody jumps in and interrupts me, I'm going to kind of keep going through these that really didn't change. Um, timing, representation, um, there was nothing new there. We, we changed should to shall with regards to limiting comments to three minutes and, um, updated, uh, the information about the, uh, the countdown clock. Now, the last one on here, um, sorry Sean, I was going to say you're just there. There you go, the last red section there. Um, so we, we did bring this up. This was new written comments received for a public hearing will be acknowledged at the hearing with the commenter's name and whether they are proponent or opponent, written comments will not be read into the record. I know there was additional discussion during the last meeting on this about whether or not, um, we were going to also include whether or not the person writing in was an opponent or proponent on this topic. And I don't believe we had a full agreement on that. Are we good with leaving it just the, the name of the person and the topic? Or is there consensus that we want to add a, basically a thumbs up or thumbs down? Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, since we visited this last time, I've had conversations with, uh, six individuals specifically on this. And the general consensus from individuals was this, is that if they give their comments and it's not going to be read, I guess what they were questioning was for them, for them to be able to say they're a proponent or opponent. They didn't feel comfortable with that, not being able to explain why they were opponent or proponent. So, uh, I didn't have an answer for him. I said that, you know, that's an interesting one.
Very good point. Sometimes somebody's making a comment that's neither.
Right.
It's just a general comment.
I just wonder if we should not really consider if we're not going to read that. It does come to the council that it doesn't have if they're a proponent or opponent.
Okay, any other discussion? Councilmember Dunn?
Uh, I think it puts a staff member or whoever's trying to put interpretation to it in a really awkward position to try and test if the opinion is a proponent or opponent. Um, I don't think it's meaningful to be able to do that.
Okay. All right, just hoping that we're here tonight. Anybody else strongly for or against? Or should we just go ahead and do this? Is there anybody opposed to taking this section out that we have, um, possibly going to add with regards to, um, we'll leave the section but just not add anything about the for or against? Any opposition to that? All right, so we will leave that section at the bottom of page nine and bottom of seven point two as is. Hey, next page.
But, question. So we're going to leave that, but a proponent or opponent will be removed?
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, top, so next page, seven point three. This is about the public hearing process. Um, first section of number one, nothing had changed since our last, um, last reviewed this. Again, clarification as to who to notice if somebody wants to speak, um, and, and residency. Now, there's no other comments on that. Um, I know Sean is not able to join us for the, the attorney's unable to join us for six o'clock. He will be here at seven, so if we do have anything left for him to review, uh, we can, uh, he can do that with us at seven o'clock. I'll do it during the mayor's report. On section two, um, the whole disruption of meeting and proper conduct and all that was starting to get a little cumbersome. So I was able to do, do some research, um, on some other municipalities or, um, rules and of engagement on these type of things. And I do want, I'll have Sean go over the suggested language here, uh, with regards to if the meeting is disrupted, preventing the normal course of city business, the council may vote to adjourn the meeting and vote on, vote on a new location, vote in the new location per RCW 4256050. Sorry, my printed version got cut off there. So based on everything I was reading on some other jurisdictions, that should cover it, but we'll have Sean wait in. Any suggestions on that?
Uh.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Could you reread that again?
Yeah, I don't want to read, yeah, I just want to make sure that, uh, I got all the words here. Change, to change this section, this used to be, um, about people making out of order comments and being removed from the meeting. Um, and through some of the trainings we've had over the last year and discussions with our city attorney, um, that's not always, um, in the best interest of the city with regards to possible legal action against the city. So, um, the proposal is to change that section two. If the meeting is disrupted, preventing the normal course of city business, the council may vote to adjourn the meeting and vote on a new location as per RCW 4256050. Probably need some more, some more wording around that, but I think to make it succinct, um, I believe that covers up, and like I said, we'll have Sean weigh in on that when he's able to join us. Any other comments on that section?
Good.
Okay, councilmember Kurtz?
What does vote on a new location, does that mean hold the meeting somewhere else or something different?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that you can do a couple of different things. I don't know if you were following at all what, um, what happened at one of the school board meetings in the last couple of months. Um, their meeting was being disrupted, so the school board voted to end the meeting. That location reconvened elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, nothing else changed on that page, so we can go on to page 11, starting with number eight. Okay, we'll flip down to eight point two, the last sentence. Um, nothing above it had changed since the last time we met. Um, and so the last section was no endorsements of candidates are allowed during citizen comment. I could not find, for the liking, I could not find my notes. Uh, I know the city attorney commented on this a couple of meetings back, so, um, I've got that marked just to have him weigh in on this again. Does anybody else have those notes? All right, well, we'll tag this and the other ones for Sean at seven o'clock. Um, paragraph two under eight point two, there were no changes, um, from before. Eight point three, same. Eight point five, no changes. Um, and then eight point six, um, the proposal is for it to mirror the same language we just talked about with regards to disruptive meetings and a new location. Okay, and, but because at the top of page 12, that's just the continuation of that, but hopefully will be replaced by the new language. Um, section nine point one, notice of vacancy. So there's, um, small clarification that, that I'm proposing there. Um, so it says, if a council vacancy occurs, the council will follow the procedures that's outlined in RCW 35A 13020. To fill the vacancy with the most qualified person available until the next available general election of nonpartisan municipal candidates. And this is, and that was getting kind of confusing, and so we did clarify with Vicky Dalton that those are always odd numbered years. And where I added, um, which are held in the odd numbered years, so we don't have to clarify any further than that. I hope, hopefully that makes sense to everybody. Um, the candidate rest continues. The capital distributive published a notice of vacancy, the procedure and deadline for applying for the position. So what I just added was the clarification that those elections are held in odd numbered years. Any feedback on that? Looking good? All right. Um, nine point two, nothing changed. Um, nine point three, the interview process. I just added a comment.
Andy Kurtz has a comment.
Oh, yes, sorry, go ahead, councilmember Kurtz.
I was going to let the mayor finish, um, but, um, their first sentence says all qualified. Never mind, I answered my own question. So qualification would mean, I think, that they have to be registered voters, which is the process that the city court goes through, right? I think that was one of the issues and, but that would mean that it was, they were qualified, so never mind, forget I asked.
Yes, and they also have to be a resident of Liberty Lake for 12 months. Yes. And so in nine point three, I did add a comment off to the side. Um, just, I wanted to clarify some of the, uh, the language on this. So, um, councilmember Foliar, you had made a note, depending on the number of applicants, council may undertake more than one round of interviews. I just wanted to clarify that. Did you mean one more round of interviews? Or did you really intend to say that it might take one more, more than one meeting? Or both?
Probably both. It just depends on the amount of applicants. Just.
So then, that we have applicants?
Mayor, I thi, I think the intent there was just to give ourselves a little more, uh, opportunity to deal with large volumes of applicants.
Okay.
So however you, however you want to word split that, that was, I think, the intent.
Okay, yeah, so when, when I first, not having the background of our discussion, when I first read this as a newcomer, I may have, I may have interpreted that as, hey, we don't have enough applicants, we're going to do more interviews because maybe we don't like the applicants or don't have enough. Um, but I think where you're going, because we've run into this before, where we had so many applicants that we couldn't finish the business in one night and we had to continue to another meeting. So I think that's what, what you were going for. Okay, all right, we will, um, we will adjust that to make it match the intent. Nine four, nine five, nine six, first paragraph, um, no changes. Last paragraph on this page, um.
Oh.
So go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm sorry, can I go back to nine point five?
Yes.
Under the duties of Mayor Pro Tem, temporary absence of the mayor, the mayor pro tem shall perform the duties and responsibilities of the mayor with regard to conduct the meeting, business of the city. I believe we need some clarification from the attorney, because through RCWs, it's pretty clear and also AWC is that the Mayor Pro Tem does not have the power to hire and fire. So I think we need some sort of clarification there. Make sure that doesn't happen. We have to take into consideration because if we have an absence like we did before, we have up to 90 days to fill that. I would assume, I've never looked at the RCWs, I think the attorney can look at this, but if I remember correctly, I think I read somewhere that if it falls in that category, some of that responsibility of this emergency hiring falls to the council, not the mayor pro tem.
Okay, great catch. We will have Sean weigh in on that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and I just made a small, and this is not showing in your packet, something I caught today when I was going over it again. The last paragraph, um, second to last line where it says voting will be either by voice or a recorded vote as determined by the mayor. Um, this is with regards to the mayor pro tem nominations. Um, I think our best bet in, in this case is to, um, only have a recorded vote, so hands up, um, so we don't have any and, and recorded instead of just doing a voice. Does anybody have any questions about that, Mayor Pro Tem?
I appreciate you catching that because I had the same note, and it says their vote is determined by the mayor. My feeling is it should be determined by the council.
Well, if we change it here, voting, because if we take out the either by voice or recorded vote, we can just, we, and change it to voting will be by a recorded vote, take out as determined by mayor, because if, if you guys are okay with that, then the decision's made.
Yeah.
Any objections? Okay, yes, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, this is something the council has discussed on many occasions, and I think it's up to the council if they want to change this, we have the option of doing that. But what we have it set up is that if there's a nomination, whoever is first nominated, we vote on that individual first. And if that person receives the majority, or in this case, four, then we don't, we don't do any more voting. I don't feel that's appropriate for all the council members, because the council has a right to vote. The citizens have given all seven of us a right to vote. I think it's important that we have the recording. So I would, I would make that into consideration that whoever gets the first four is going to be the individual that gets it, he or she. But I do feel for a tech, small thing technicality, that go ahead and mention the other candidate. Individuals are allowed to vote, because then it shows for sure who voted in favor of this individual and who, who also voted in the other. Because at least the citizens see, uh, how everybody voted. Not going to change the outcome, I just think for clarity and uniformity.
Is there, if there's no objections to that, we can work on the wording for that. It would start with the last line on the page you're looking at. As soon as one nominee receives the majority of the vote, before that, votes of the council, that council member will be declared mayor pro tem. Um, and then we can just strike, no votes will be taken on, um, on remaining nominees. There will be, we'll clean that up. Does anybody have any, any concerns with us cleaning that up and coming back with the best language? Okay, looks like we're good on that. We'll, we'll come up with what makes the most sense in the least words.
Just a question, sorry.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, uh, as I read it, it says, once, um, there are four votes obtained, there will be no further voting. And then I heard, but we're going to take votes from others anyway? I want to make sure I understood that.
That's what we're, it sounds like, uh, councilmember Dunn, what, uh, if I may paraphrase Mayor Pro Tem, that that's what he was going for. So we'll still go through, the first one to get four will, will be declared the mayor pro tem, but to record the rest of the votes as well.
Okay, I look forward to considering what, what is proposed as wording. Go ahead.
Sounds good. All right, believe it or not, we're almost done this fast. Um, section 10, um, councilmember Garcia, I had a question for you. Um, to make sure that we're, um, because you had brought up, had a really, uh, great point that you brought up several meetings ago about having the agenda packet available at city hall. Um, we, we've talked about this in the staff and directors meeting a couple times, and, um, sometimes city hall hours aren't so great for the public because they're not open, we're not open late or, you know, on, on, on Saturday. So we were talking about the possibility of, um, having, having a link set up at the library for people to access with, you know, pointing somebody there, and then if there are certain pages of the agenda that they'd like to print, that they would like to print out, then we, we could do that for them. Does that, does that fit with what your intention is or the spirit of what you were asking?
Yes, it does, and I'd like to give credit to Officer Morgan, who, um, at the end of our meeting, when it was over, his idea was the library would be the best conduit for, um, for this activity. So this, this is perfect. I think you've, um, outlined it just as it was intended.
Perfect, thank you for the clarification. And I can see councilmember Seavers.
Yeah, just a question. Uh, this is a great idea, uh, councilmember Garcia. Is there any reason that we wouldn't just make it available if somebody were to walk into city hall? Or maybe it's already available, I don't know. Somebody walk into city hall during regular business hours and say, hey, can you print me out, uh, the agenda for, for the, the full packet for the next council meeting? Would we do that as a service already?
That's reasonable. I have, go ahead, councilmember Garcia.
I'm sorry, I thought it was directed me out. Um, that is, that is the overall intent, so that if they come to the city hall, they can ask to look at it and review it at city hall where they don't take the binder with them, and they may not want pages. So I suspect that it would be, um, both venues would be available, the city hall, um, in case they want to come and just take a look at it in our conference room area, or have pages made, or the link to the library. So those two avenues, I think, would be, um, probably the best fit for us availing it to the public.
Is there any, if I may, sorry, my, my hand's not.
Go ahead.
Is, is there any reason with a member of the public coming and requesting to have it printed, if they did walk, printed so they can take it home with them? I understand printing costs, um, but, but honestly, in eight years is the first I'm thinking of this. So thank you, TG, such a simple thing, but, um, I'm just thinking if I'm a member of the public that, um, doesn't know how to go on the website and download, uh, packet that's on there, or to walk into city hall, is that not a service that we might want to just, whoever's, uh, manning the front desk, just, just print it for them, but here you go. Uh, at least at this juncture, I don't think it'd be too cumbersome or too terribly taxing on the city to print a few copies a week.
Good idea, great suggestion.
I, I, I don't know what the, the right answer is, I'm just throwing it out there. Uh, I think it's a great, great point, um, councilmember Garcia.
Mayor Pro Tem, and then.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I think it's a great idea. In re, in reality, the city's been doing this for years. Prior to myself being elected to the council, there was times when I would look at the agenda, and there were specific things I, I had an interest in. I was able to come to the city and specifically say, I'm interested in the information such and such, and they would print out that for me. Because what I'm cautionary is this, tonight we had, I think, 119 pages. Last meeting, we had over 300 pages. And to just arbitrarily say, we'll print out the whole agenda, uh, you know, there was, I, I remember one time on a tractor, I think there was 40 plus pages on the requirements of this tractor. There's a lot more information that I wanted to know. So I think having the ability to say to the individual, is there a specific thing you're interested in? And be able to print that out versus giving them 300 pages or 150 or something like that, when they're only interested in. For, in my case, I was able to be interested in maybe something encompass four or five pages. Great idea, though.
Ken?
Yeah, I, I agree with what he said. I think that that's exactly how we would do it. If someone were to, someone were to come in asking for a copy of the agenda, there would be a non-issue. What we would do is ask, do you want the entire agenda printed, which could be hundreds of pages, or is there a specific section you want? So we would do a little investigating on what they're looking for, you know, and if we can just print the few pages they need, perfect, not a problem. If they want the whole full packet, I mean, I don't really see why that would be an issue to do that for, um, for a citizen.
Yeah, I, I think if that's worked in the past, I would like to run it by Sean, just to make sure we don't get into any, you know, use of public funds, that kind of thing, but if that's what we've been doing, it's been working, I don't see, unless there's a challenge from the, on the legal side, um, to, is there any reason we can't do that?
And I will say it's not a common request.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was rare, very rare.
Okay, great, we will tackle that. And then, um, actually, that was the last piece that I had any notes on. So unless there's anything new, um, what I was, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. There is one thing that, that's come up actually quite a bit, and it is going to come up in tonight's meeting also. And that's a timely fashion that we're able to get information out to, not only council, but the citizens. I realize that, you know, we, since the first year, we've had a tremendous turnover, and the last year, we've had tremendous turnover. And trying to ask our staff to do this is very cumbersome, and we realized that there's sort of a time delay. There was a time in the past where council pretty much got our packet on Thursdays. And now because of whatever else has been happening with COVID and everything else, sometimes we don't get it until, parts of it, until quite late. Uh, part of the agenda tonight on what was sent out ARP nonprofit application summary, I saw it at 4:15.
That's actually not on the agenda tonight.
It's not on the agenda, but it's sent out to the council, and there was something that was arrived at three o'clock that came to the council. With my position, with my work schedule, I'm, I'm more flexible that I can get in and look at this stuff. When somebody is still working eight to five to nine to six, it's very difficult to get that information to a council member in a timely fashion. Councilman Foliar's brought this up previously, so I, I think all of us, we need to be working with staff, and staff needs to be working with us. Is it, how can we get this information out quicker to not only the public, but the council? Thank you.
Yeah, Kyle, did you want to speak to that at all? Because I know we, the, our council rules, as you can see in 10.3, um, it has said for a while about it being put in final form by 1:00 p.m. on Friday. Um, and I know quite often, we do get it, uh, late, late on Thursday, but I know sometimes there are updates along the way.
Absolutely, yeah. And so this, and, and so I think what council has been experiencing is a very short term, you know, staffing shortage issue, where I was trying to put this thing together, uh, over the course of my other daily duties to try to get this out of my, at time. So I do apologize. I mean, there, I could have certainly made a better effort and stayed later to get that out on time, but I just wanted to let you know that that is a short term issue. We do have the staff in place to make sure that this is not an issue going forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foliar?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have two things, if I can. The first one is about the topic we were just discussing. Uh, I guess one thing that I've been noticing as well is we're not regularly getting, uh, I'm not looking for a monthly report from the directors, and I'm not saying I look for one at every council meeting, but one a month. Um, it seems like we're a little bit of hit and miss on who we get it from and who we don't. So I would just ask if we could, uh, So I would just ask if we could visit that, that would be wonderful as well. My second item I'd like to discuss, and this is, this is for the council to consider, I, I'd like to go back to section 2.2, if I can, in this resolution.
Give us a second to get there. There you go, special meetings. Go ahead, Councilmember Foyers.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm only speaking for myself here. I'm not looking to represent anybody else. And if the council disagrees with me, that's fine, just tell me to shut up and I'll get over it. In my mind, in, in my mind, a special meeting is special. And it has special circumstances. And historically, I feel like it's been some form of a, we need to take action sooner than later. It can't wait until the next regular meeting. I don't know if that's everybody else's interpretation, but we recently, recently I was asked if I would, if I was available for a special meeting by the mayor with several days in advance. And I said, I said, how long will it take? She gave the response, I said, yep, I can carve out a half hour of my evening that day, separate from our other regularly scheduled meetings. The meeting rolls around, and I see that there's items added to the agenda, which may be, may have, may have deserved a special meeting. But for me personally, I wasn't anticipating a two-hour meeting. I was anticipating a half-hour meeting. So I guess my question for the council is, what is everybody's interpretation of the intent for a special meeting?
Councilmembers Seavers, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. I've got two things. Both of them are comments regarding to Councilmember Foyers' comments. Monthly report from directors. It seems like we, we used to get this on a monthly basis when we did, did our workshop meetings separate, and we had each director split, so that once a month, the director would give us a report. And to Councilmember Foyers' point, I think somehow we've kind of gotten away from that. And I think he's got a very good point there, that it was really helpful to just sort of get the general overview of what's going on in each department from each director. That was really nice. I would love to get back to that. Regarding special meetings, I, I agree with Councilmember Foyers here, where I don't know that it's necessarily a special meeting needs to be something that is incredibly urgent and must be taken action on immediately. But similar thoughts where it seems like a special meeting should be something more urgent in nature. And I can think to times in, over years past where we would call a special meeting and say, we just, there's something we, we do need to get done, we need to get done by a certain date, and we just don't have time in regular council meetings. So we would discuss it, we typically discuss it in a council meeting, say, let's call a special meeting a week from tonight or two weeks from tonight to make this happen. And, and I think that some sort of wording in here would be valuable to suggest a little bit more urgency around why a special meeting is needed.
Councilmember Dunn.
I think that the nature of a special meeting is a special, and it's really difficult to apply wording of language and procedure to define that. I think the definition of special is in the consensus of whether or not it's required and the three people who voiced that it's needed. Subjective language, I think, would be very difficult to administer.
Any other, any other input? Go ahead, Councilmember Kurt.
Can you give a little bit of context, I mean, specific to the last, the special meeting that we had last week? When we were talking about, when I talked individually with the people who were supportive of it, the, there did seem to be an urgency, which is why I requested it to be sometime soon. And then when we got to the point of looking at the doodle poll, not everybody responded. But I think the tricky part, too, is that it's coming up into the budget season, capital facilities plan. And so I feel like generally, even beyond just the special meeting part, we, my perception is that we are, our meetings sometimes get kind of crunched. We have a lot of stuff to talk about. And my perception, again, is that I feel like we're, we're teetering on the edge of needing maybe to meet even more often than bi-weekly, just because of the amount of things that we are trying to do, the, the level of detail that we're going through as, as we're going through tonight with this ordinance. And we're going through a lot of really important stuff. And I think that if it's a special meeting, or if it's an additional meeting in a month, I just want to make sure we have enough time to go through and really give the topics we're talking about enough, we give each other enough time to discuss it. So I, yeah, I just, I feel like we, I don't know, I don't know what language we could put in here that would talk about the urgency, because then I think it makes it all pretty subjective, rather than allowing us to, if three of us feel like, or three of, three of any of us feel like we need to have a meeting, I would hope that the, the urgency and the requests from our peers would be respected. I hear what Councilmember Foyers is saying about expecting it to be a half hour and it being a much longer meeting. It was, it was a three-hour meeting, wasn't it, almost, by the time we were done? I don't, I don't know how to fix that either, but.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think everybody's making some really good points. I, I think the fact is that, that it'll come up to where if there's an emergency that has to be dealt with, I think we're all going to be on the bandwagons, yes, we have to address that. But I think we could call something a special meeting, an interest meeting, or just a discussion meeting. We have a process that the mayor or three council members, as we all know, can call a meeting. And if that's what everybody goes along with, then we're going to have a meeting. But also, at the start of that meeting, when the agenda is mentioned, we go to look at, approve the agenda, there's a process and procedure. And this last meeting was a great example of process and procedure, how it worked and it worked very well. And that was when it was proposed, there was a motion made by a council member that did not feel that we should probably have that meeting. There was a second, and then there was a discussion, and it went to a vote. Now, if there had have been a majority vote that we didn't feel we wanted that meeting, then that overrides the three individuals who did want to have a meeting, and we wouldn't have had it. But the result was, if the majority said, yes, let's go ahead with it. So that's kind of the process. And I think the process works well. The only thing I would be cautionary for me is that determining what is an emergency. That would kind of be it, for me. Somebody may say to me, Mike, would you support this meeting? Because I think it's an emergency. And if I don't see it an emergency, I'm not going to be supportive of it. But I would be supportive of a regular meeting if it's something we had to discuss outside of Tuesday, first and third Tuesday. Thank you.
Councilmembers Seavers.
Councilmember Kennedy, or sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Kennedy, I think you've got a great point, that in our procedures, it's to the council to vote on or approve the agenda and ask that the meeting agenda not be approved. So I think that's a great point, and I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I think what may have caught people off-guard the last time that started out as kind of an emergency executive session to talk about one topic. And we get, you know, there was several days notice, and then this, and then we were looking at dates, actually later this week, for the special meeting on, on the, on the social media. And then, then it got added to our meeting last Tuesday. So I think there was some confusion and maybe not enough notice. So if we could just keep everybody's, everybody else's calendars in mind when we are doing that. Hopefully give, if we're going to have a special session, give a little bit more notice. I think everybody would appreciate that. Councilmember Langford.
Yes, ma'am, one way, can you hear?
Yeah.
Yeah, one way to put some definition to this would, number one, be limit the agenda to the one item. Secondly, have the people that feel that this is important enough to merit everybody's time, that they put a time limit on it. We have one agenda item, and it's going to take us two hours, or it's going to take us an hour. And then stick to that. Looks like it's going to take an hour and a half, schedule another meeting, but this one's done in an hour or whatever the, the procedure should be. Thank you.
All right, I think that's a great food for thought for everybody. So we're just going to be more cognizant of that as we go forward. And I will reach out on the directors' reports, because I know we got away, you know, quite a, away from the monthly reporting quite a while ago. We do get monthly reports, and I'll make sure that if, before we can get back, until we can get back to more regularly scheduled in-person reports, that we make sure that those get out to everybody. I guess I didn't even notice whether or not the council was on those, and I apologize if you aren't. Mayor Pro Tem, and then Councilmember Foyers.
Thank you. Councilmember Langford, thank you for making that point. And the reason being is this, I had totally forgot about this, but there had been several council members mentioned this in the past. And now is a prime time we should be discussing this, that maybe we should start looking at our agenda and assign times to it. That we're going to cover this subject for 10 minutes, 15 minutes, whatever the case may be, what we think it's going to be. And then what we're able to do is that we can try to confine ourselves to that period of time, comments and stuff. Granted, if we have to run over that, we can do that. But we might also have it where we will run less. Now, where this does work out quite well, it's my experience with the STA, I'm sure Councilmembers Seavers will also agree with that, is that their meetings are very, very effective because we have times assigned to it. And the time is very flexible if it takes more or less, but it always comes in within the timeframe. And I know I've had several council members mention this, and it's been brought up during these meetings. So I would like to get the input from other council members, is that something you'd be comfortable looking at? Oh, can I say, I'm sorry, can I say one more thing? The benefit is this, and this is what's happened in the STA. They will have, sometimes the meetings are very long. They will have citizens that are only interested in the specific thing. I use my stopping example, is I used to come to the meetings and I was interested in a particular thing. But I had to sit through the entire meeting for the council to get to that. Where if I could see on the agenda that at 8:45 approximately, they were going to cover the subject I'm interested in, I would show up before that and not have to sit through the whole thing. Thank you.
Good, and I have next. Councilmembers Seavers, and then Councilmember Foyers, sorry about that. So, and then, okay, we have Seavers, Foyers, and Garcia. There we go.
Mayor Pro Tem, I think that's an excellent point, or excellent points from everybody. I think putting times on the agenda would be very valuable. I want to be careful that we don't do that in lieu of having good, healthy discussion and debate during our council meetings. I think we could, we could manifest that in a, in a way that it's sort of a, a general timeline. And perhaps to Councilmember, sorry, to Mayor Pro Tem's point, if it's, if the next agenda item's at 8:45, and it's 8:44, that if the mayor's running the meeting that, that evening, the mayor could say, hey, we're 30 seconds from when we're supposed to start the next agenda item. Have you guys discussed this enough, or would you like to continue this discussion? I don't think we need to hard and fast rule that we need to stop the discussion right then. But that'd be a nice reminder for council and, and let council know, hey, it's, it's kind of time to move on. But if it's a great discussion happening and, and something we feel strongly that we need to continue, we say, great, we're going to keep this discussion going. Anyway, I think there's maybe some council culture things that could change there. But I do think putting some timelines on the agenda could be very valuable.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Foyers, and then Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the council for hearing me out and giving me some feedback on the topic. I wasn't really looking for any kind of a resolution change, just more awareness. So thank you, I appreciate that. I want to echo what the mayor said. For me, and I only speak for more time I can get here, the better off for me the meeting is. So that's the reason why I want to do that. So thank you for hearing me out. I'll shut up and go, go away now.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Councilmember Foyers, for bringing this up. It, it was timely, and I think you were probably the first person that talked about limitations on time, not limitations on thought. So that was good. I, I do agree 1,000,000%, especially with what Mr. Seaver said, Member Seaver said, because we have to be smart with taxpayer dollars and taxpayer management, money management. And therefore, time management is just as important. So I do appreciate, appreciate that. So thank you for bringing, everybody for bringing that to the table. It's a good idea.
Okay, all right, so no further comments. It is now 6:43. We will kind of take a break from our workshop, and when we resume, we'll be on the meeting at 7. So if everybody can mute yourselves and maybe even turn the videos off until we resume at 7,
Whatever it was.
Okay. Is everybody back on here?
That was in favor of it.
Okay, we're going to check your video, check your sound. Let me make sure I have everybody on here. One, two, three, four, five.
Okey-dokey.
Sorry, everybody, I'm arranging bases on my computer, so I got it wrong. Who am I missing? Oden, are you back on?
I am.
You must have fallen down to the bottom, there you are. Okay, everybody, hopefully you can hear us. So welcome to the Tuesday October 2021 Regular City Council Meeting. Governor Inslee's Order 20-28-152 regarding the OPMA remains in effect. It requires public meetings, hearings to be held remotely, with the option of also holding an in-person component to a public meeting or hearing if certain conditions are met. At the present time, the City of Liberty Lake has determined not to hold an in-person component to a public meeting or hearing. So we are going to go ahead and kick off with the invocation. Councilmember Langford.
Yes, may I have a please? Dear the Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet as the City Council for the City of Liberty Lake. We ask that you would impart wisdom to us, Lord, and that you would be with us while we make our discussions, that we listen to the ideas, and, Lord, that we all are on the same page to provide the best of the best for our residents in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will, following order, we'll start with a quick roll call here. Make sure I got everybody's video up. Okay, Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Foyer.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt.
Present.
Councilmember Severs.
Hey, guys.
Councilmember Langford. Councilmember Tim Kennedy.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
All right.
Happy to be here. Love it.
Present and accounted for. So we will go ahead and move on. Real quick, before we do that, just a reminder to everybody, there will be time for public comments. Please send a message to Todd Henderson if you would like to speak. So you want to get that in your heads ahead of time. So we'll go ahead with the agenda approval. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the agenda approval, for the council consideration. I understand that there's one addition is being proposed.
Yes, opportunity, Mayor Protim, I'd like to ask that we have in-scheduled a executive meeting following our regular meeting this evening at NACIT. Send out the appropriate logins to our members for that meeting. That we'll be discussing security and a semi-continuation of what we went through last week or talked about.
So just for clarification, the motion is to add executive session at number seventeen pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten. Do we have a second?
Therefore, Madam Mayor, I would, I recommend we make a motion to amend the agenda to add an executive session.
Do we have a second to amend?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Severs. Any discussions? Not hearing any. All in favor of adding executive session at number seventeen, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Right?
Therefore.
We will be adding executive session at seventeen. We have a motion for the, to approve the amended agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I make a motion, we accept the agenda approval as changed.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Langford. Any discussions?
Any? Okay. Not seeing any. All in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion number seven zero, agenda is approved as amended. So we are moving into citizen comments, as I alluded to earlier. If you'd like to make a citizen comment, please send a note to Todd Henderson, our team manager in the chat function. We can, you will have three minutes and you will see a countdown timer on the screen. So I do believe we have Greg Cronin would like to make a comment. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. This is Greg Cronin, Liberty Lake resident. And I would, subject of my comment this evening is, has to do with the budget plan and pedestrian crossing signal. And in June of twenty twenty-one, I had a conversation with Ben Schmidt, who was the city engineer at that time, about the installation of a pedestrian crossing signal at the corner of Sharp and Country Vista. The installation was originally planned for twenty twenty-three. And due to a lower installation cost than anticipated, the city was going to move some of the installations of more of the crossing signals into twenty twenty-two. And one of those was the signal at Sharp and Country Vista. And even though Ben is no longer engineer, I'm hoping this is still a possibility for twenty twenty-two to be included in the twenty twenty-two budget. Part of the reason why this is important is because this is a crossing for a student bus stop. And also, in that area, we've got the sidewalk is, there's an area that goes to the crosswalk that is currently blocked. And it needs to be reconfigured along with some drainage, which Ben did understand. And so what happens is that one area that's blocked, it requires students and people to actually go out into the street in order to get to the crosswalk. So your consideration for this will be appreciated, and I thank you for your time and listening. And I will send Kelsey these notes for the documentation.
Thank you very much for coming, Greg.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to make a citizen comment? And I know there will be another opportunity near the end of the meeting before we go into executive session. Is that it? All right. I'm not seeing any more requests for citizen comments. So we will go ahead, move on to announcements, proclamations, special presentations. I don't believe we have any. My background.
That is correct. Yep.
Okay, yeah, it wasn't noted on the agenda that we're not, so I want to make sure I haven't missed that somewhere. All right, on to reports and inquiries. So city council reports. Does anybody have anything to report on since the last meeting or for anything going forward? Wow. Okay, great. Councilmember Kurt.
I don't have anything in particular to report on, but I wanted to ask if we'll be talking soon about getting any additional special meetings for our budgeting process on our calendars. So last year, we spent a couple extra Tuesdays doing that and love to get those on the calendars now to plan ahead. And then also adding to some upcoming workshop, coming up, a discussion on the code of ethics that we talked about last, last week. That's it.
Yep. So closer to the end of the meeting, when we get to the introduction of upcoming agenda items, the plan is to take a look at the matrix closer and so we can get those on there.
Perfect. Thanks.
All right. Any other council members? All right, not seeing any. I will, I guess it's time for mine. High level, I will, I will not feel least offender on introducing our new city engineer. That will come in just a little bit. So we did have interviews and an offer that was accepted by David Williams for our city engineer. You will meet him a little bit later. This coming Monday at eleven AM, Kramer Overpass groundbreaking. We'll say this a couple of times during the meeting, make sure everybody's aware. And so if you can join us off of Appleway, Country Vista for that at eleven AM, that would be great. Spoken Valley Chamber Board Meeting. Hello?
Mayor, did you say that was on Monday?
Monday, the eleventh.
Thank you.
Sure. Interesting updates from the local school superintendents during the Valley Chamber Board Meeting. So any of, if any of you know, any substitute teachers or bus drivers, all of the districts or entire streets right now looking for substitute teachers and bus drivers. Great report from the Spokane Valley Fire Department Commissioner. All of the Spokane Valley Fire Department firefighters have had, or had started their vaccines or had approved exemptions. This was as of last week when we had our meeting. So at this point, they are not in jeopardy of losing any of their firefighters. News to me, I had learned a couple of weeks prior that I did not realize that Spokane Valley Fire actually had a requirement for their firefighters to also be licensed and keep. Always, always a great addition. We have the Harvard Road ribbon cutting. Thank you for those who were able to attend, very well attended. It was interesting, of course, you know, it hit Facebook, what's going on on the pedestrian bridge. So it was, it was all good. We had the ribbon cutting. We had all of the representatives of people who were involved in the project and really happy to have that, have that piece done. We did have a very interesting meeting. It is in the mayor's report that I sent out earlier today. I had a scouting with Deb Frank. She is part of a group that is called Building Ohana. Ohana being Hawaiian name for home, sorry, family, messed that one up. They are looking at a possible project from Liberty Lake. I don't have really a whole lot more information to share on that. If anybody's interested in learning more about the group, I did put the link in my mayor's report. And lastly, the GSI Public Policy Council, there is still a chance that there will be another special session in November with regards to transportation. For a while, we thought that was just off the table. Preceding that, there are several national bills that we were watching prior to that. New legislative districts need to be done by November fifteenth. And there are also ongoing discussions with regards to the long-term care app with talks about whether or not the implementation of that will be moved out. So nothing solid on that, but they are discussing. So that concludes my mayor's report. Do we have Parks and Arts Commission tonight?
I don't believe anybody is on from Parks and Arts.
I don't see anybody either. And I didn't know if you had that meeting or anything you needed or we must have reported on. All right, and we will go on to city administrative report. Katie Allen is on much deserved vacation. I'm assuming she landed, she and her husband landed in Italy safe and sound. And Jim is covering while she is out, so it's all yours, Jim.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first thing I'll start with is the update on the matrix. So as Councilmember Kurtz was asking, we don't have the workshop discussion on here yet for code of ethics, but we can certainly add that to a future workshop. We do have ordinance cleanup, which was a discussion on positions to include city administrator, chief of police and directors. And then capital facility plan, we do have some discussion this evening. And then depending on how the conversation goes, there could be more discussion, obviously, in future council meetings. Trevor Reagan is going to present us with a brief city hall HVAC update. I don't think he has much, but a little bit. Trevor?
Evening, Mayor and Council. So yeah, just a brief update upon the approval of the last council meeting for R and R. We awarded the, we have met with them. That's no email. We are meeting in person for Friday at City Hall. I've ordered the material, but I'm sure you want it. Right now, materials, just in general, are tough to buy equipment. So we're looking, as we go, we're looking at about a beginning of November. Get the new equipment installed at City Hall, but we also are very, R and R's understanding of our situation at City Hall where we can't just pull all for once and have them not running because City Hall needs to stay warm. So it might be a little slower process to make sure it's, still has units operating while they are installing the new. So we will have a little bit more information for the next meeting after we meet with them this Friday for our pre-construction meeting.
Trevor, you cut out a little bit here and there just to make, just to make sure I caught it. You're looking at the beginning of November, starting, as you said.
Yeah, yeah, correct. Beginning of November, and I'm sure what, what, but beginning of November, materials being delivered. Kind of tough getting certain materials and equipment on the HVAC side right now, in general, for construction materials.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to snow update. This is the season, haha. Steven is going, he's got a couple of items on the agenda this evening related to snow. So he was going to provide just a really quick update on the situation with snow removal.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Can you guys all hear me?
We could. Evening, Mayor. We heard you at first, but we don't now.
Can you guys hear me?
We, we could at first, and you keep cutting out.
Sorry, I've probably got bad connection up here. Anyways, we've been busy getting our snow equipment all ready to go. We, we've got our salter all ready, our de-icer all ready. We've got a couple of things on the agenda for snow. As you can see, we've got our de-ice and salt on there. We've also looking at leasing a backhoe this year instead of doing. So we're ready to go. Last year, we did some plowing in October, which was a little awkward. But hopefully, we don't have a repeat of that this year. And I will be here if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Langford. Yes.
Steven, did you say that you already have the, the de-icer and the salt?
That's on the agenda for purchase. We do have a little leftover from last year, but the salter and our de-icer is all ready to go and for when winter gets here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. There was a comment or question at the last meeting about the roundabout lighting. And so I've asked Sergeant Morgan to just provide a quick update from that last meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I believe the, the question of the roundabouts were just how well the lighting was on each one of the roundabouts. And I believe the only one that we had a big concern with was the one at Harvest Parkway. And from my understanding, we've already got the lights set up for that one. And so we should be good to go. Looking at the other two roundabouts, I believe the lighting is sufficient and that we haven't had any issue or any complaints of any lighting problems at night, especially in those two roundabouts. So I believe once we've taken care of the Harvest Parkway one, we should be good to go.
Thank you. Kyle has an ARPA update.
Excellent. Yeah. So just a brief update, based on the workshop that we had last month, there was some direction to see kind of what, what the percentage of activities or fundraising efforts were geared towards the Liberty Lake community. So I did reach out to all those applicants. And I did provide counsel this afternoon with an updated version. I am still waiting for, for one more so I can formally present, you know, the dollar amount for, for council deliberation. And so what I'd like to do is bring this back for a workshop discussion at our next council meeting and have council discuss what, what path we want to take this and wrap it up if council still chooses.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
All right, moving on. Lisa has a multitude of construction updates to give us.
And I will be very brief regarding Harvard Road Bridge and Kramer Overpass. First Harvard Road. We have some temporary paint marks for the arrows and we'll be adding the tracking shortly. Unfortunately, the plastic paint that, that was specked out is on back orders. So it'll probably be spring before the permanent markings are in place. Also, we are working on a structural analysis for the mast arm for westbound Appleway to determine if it's, if it has sufficient loading to allow for four directional signs to be installed. And we have to do a little investigation on the base for that mast arm. So, so that will, until we get those answers, we won't be able to install those, but we are working on it. Kramer Parkway, Kramer Overpass, you've heard from the mayor that we do have the groundbreaking. And they are beginning to do night closures as a next, for, or night closures for the, the lanes on either side of I ninety. Kramer, well, we already mentioned the groundbreaking for Indiana and Harvard Signal. So that has been installed. The signal is bagged, but Greenstone did run into some ADA issues. And they're waiting for some parts to extend the pad buttons to meet ADA requirements. So we cannot light that until the ADA issues have been addressed. And as for legacy ridge drive signal, it is out to bid. And the bid opening will be October twenty-second after, and we do expect to be bringing back the award at your November fourth meeting. That one, we may see some work starting this fall, but the bulk of that will be installed in the spring of twenty twenty-two. And we're pretty confident that we have some interest in that project. Also, great news, the generator got in early. And so we, so we do have, the contractor poured the pad this week. It's got a cure for five days or something like that. And so, but the generator will actually be installed probably the beginning of next week. So progress there? That's all I have. Do you have questions?
I've got a quick clarification on the Indiana and Harvard signal. That's not one that we are managing, correct?
No, that's, that's developer driven. That's a Greenstone project.
Okay, just wanted to check. Thank you. Mayor, for a time, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lisa, thanks for that information. Question on the generator. It's, it's interesting. I just saw the notes again today when that was actually donated to us a long time ago. It's great that they're coming to fruition. My question is this, though. I noticed where the pad is. And the question is, a little late now, but if this is the question, why would we install a very expensive generator on the outside of the fence? Didn't it make more sense to install it on the inside of the fence where it's protected by the police department?
I cannot speak to that. I, I will, I will research it and get back to you on that.
Lisa.
Lisa, that was a very good answer. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, if I can speak to that, if you don't mind?
Yes, Trevor, thank you. Oh.
I know, watching the thing being built, Mayor Protem, they're actually building a fence around it to gate it in order to make it protected a little bit more. So they are putting it inside of a fence that they are building around it now in order to help protect it.
Thank you.
Okay, aren't further questions? Any further questions? Moving on to recruitment, we'll kick it off with, with Kyle and then move on to Lisa with their new recruitments and I'll wrap it up.
And so as I'm sure most of you are aware, the city hired Kelsey Hardy as the new city clerk to replace Ann Swenson. And as council obviously confirmed at the last council meeting, and I cannot tell you how excited I am to have her aboard. And I cannot tell you how thankful I am to Lisa for letting us have her. So thank you, Kelsey. Thank you, Lisa. I'm super excited to have you guys aboard.
If I just might add, it's great that we have at least come to a point in our city's growth that there are promotional opportunities within our city. We've seen several of them in the last year or so. So congratulations, Kelsey and Lisa. Hopefully, we'll, we'll be back filling that permit tech position fairly soon, hopefully.
I hope so, too. So, and I guess that's a, I'm going to go out of order here. So as for the permit tech, we actually have interviews scheduled for Thursday this week. And we have some good potential candidates, and I am hopeful that we will be bringing someone on board. With that, I'm very, very, very excited to introduce our new city engineer, David Williams. And he will, he will be, he comes from California. He's got about 20 years of experience in capital projects, roadway projects, water, etc. Very, very strong background. From his references, we all heard, I heard from every single one of them, what an amazing communicator he is, both with contractors and with stakeholders. And I think that, that those are the number one features that we look for in a city engineer. So I'm really excited to welcome him aboard. David, would you like to say a few words?
You're on mute, David.
Sorry about that. Just talking to myself here. Thank you all so much for this opportunity to serve with all of you. And I look forward to, you know, diving in and to getting to know all of you, the projects that the, all of the digging you guys did for this position is actually a pretty important position, too. So I just hope to serve all of you and in this position in a, in a very good way. So much for the opportunity, very much, everyone.
Thank you. And David will be starting, David will be starting on October 27th. So really very much looking forward to his joining the team.
Yeah.
Go ahead, David, sorry.
Oh, sorry, but I'll be on the next, the next meeting as well, too.
Great, thank you.
Welcome aboard, David. Got a question for you.
Yes.
Since the council wasn't privy to any of your information, perhaps you could take a few minutes to tell us about what your background is and where you're coming from, and have you ever been associated with cities before, et cetera?
Yes, okay. So I come from California. I began my career civil engineering back in 1990. An intern with the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans. There, I moved into a technician's position, into a transportation engineer position. I worked in several different firm companies, design, land development. And then I went back to Caltrans, working in their, let me see here, planning division, which was the 15 freeway going through most of the mid-city of San Diego. That was a lot of design work. The next was hydraulics engineering, did a lot of that for half. And then construction, that was my, I love construction. That was a really more my bread and butter. I've done that for maybe like, so, and I've done, or worked with the city of Oceanside, San Diego, the Caltrans. I also worked as a CMRE director as well, too, for Harrison Associates, for Somus, and then moved to San Diego. And a lot of my projects, they were, a lot of them doing a lot of underground, a lot of hydraulics, a whole bunch of water. And then structural, is roadways, any type of projects as well, too. Sometimes they were the people's front yards, other times they were in the middle of the road. Did a whole lot of different, a lot of different projects over the course of my. And also, too, sorry, I almost forgot this, too. I've also been a pastor, too, for about 10 years as well, too. So that kind of adds a little bit of spice to this, too.
Sure, sure. Well, thank you for sharing that with us and good luck. And it looks like from all appearances, they've made a great decision. Thank you.
And if you guys missed it, I just sent David's written mail last week. So if he didn't, just let me know. I'll read some.
Okay.
All right, I think we still have a couple more recruitment items there, Jen.
I, I think Councilmember Receivers, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a quick, David, welcome. And I agree with your sentiment that this is a very important position. We're very excited to have you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being here. Thank you.
All right, moving on. We do have two positions open in the operations and maintenance department. One is for a full-time streets maintenance worker, that is. And our mechanic will be posting that position in a couple of days. Okay, moving on to events and dates to remember. Next Saturday is the last farmer's market of the season. Can't believe it's already done. Kramer Parkway, regarding that, on October 11th, we will be sending out an invitation through email probably later this week. So you will have information on where to park, how to access that parking. It's a little bit of a unusual parking situation up there. So we'll, we'll make sure you have all the right information that you need. And then the library has a Hogwarts Halloween party, October 28th. Reminder that the November 2nd council meeting has been moved to November 4th. And Friends of the Library book sale, their fall sale is November 19th and 20th. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, one of them is on farmer's market. I know that we sent out, or the mayor sent out something here in the last week. If we didn't have any council members interested in volunteering the booth, have we decided not to put the booth up?
I only heard from a couple people. So unless somebody says they will be there. Yes, while we're here at this meeting, then we won't set it up.
So, I'm sorry. Do we have individuals who are offered to be in the booth?
But I only heard from a couple people. They said no. So unless somebody's going to step up today and say that they're going to be there, then we won't, then we won't set it up.
Okay, all right, which I think is a wise decision. The other question would be, is that for this report, where are we the status on advertising for city administrator by member?
Starts tomorrow because we have an amendment to make to the, the job description tonight.
Very good, thank you.
And I just wanted to add one thing for events. I went to the volunteer kickoff meeting for Winter Glow on Saturday. They are going to be at the containers just north of Orchard Park. There are green painted containers doing some maintenance on the pathways. And then starting on November 6th at 9:00 a.m., they are going to be looking for people to come and help set up. We can get a better, a more detailed schedule out. But we are also looking for volunteers to help do night patrols from around 11:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m. Tom Salberg is helping coordinate that due to some vandalism last year and some other things that we've seen escalating in our parks. We're, we're really looking for maybe partners of people during those hours to help patrol those parks. So we'll get that information out on the city's website as well to take volunteers. So I know there's been a lot of people talking about neighborhood watches, getting scope bags. So hopefully, some of the people that are listening will further have their ring for this, this beginning project. Thanks. All right, so if there's no other questions or comments, I guess we are on to workshop discussions for Trailhead, Lisa.
My apologies. Todd, if you could bring up the Trailhead presentation, please? Thank you.
Can we change it so we just can slide it easier to see? Thank you. Got it.
So I just wanted to take a few minutes just to give you an update on where we're at with Trailhead. As you know, this is a pretty rapidly moving project. Katie sent out an email to you all, letting you know that, that State Project Review Committee did approve us for progressive design build on the 23rd. And we now have the RFQ out on the street. And in fact, today, we had a pre-proposal meeting, pretty exciting to see the amount of interest in this proposal. So we had four of the major GCs at the meeting. And we had three architectural firms represented at the meeting, and so that was pretty exciting. We, the, the RFQ, we are going to have the, the SOQs are due on the 22nd of October. And then we will be working to shortlist them with potential, the schedule for the interview is that we hope to be doing interviews on the 9th of November. So, so we will, part of the process, part of the process, so we do the interviews and then we may shortlist the proposers with the proposals and openings. And then we will be coming back to you with the design build team for your approval, hopefully on December 7th. So moving quite quickly. And as soon as you approve that contract, we're moving into programming and validation. And again, the schedule is such that, that we will be bringing back the contract for construction and/or buying out the designers in April. And then, then we jump into the design and permitting process. And we're under construction by, by April, late April of next year. So it's very, very fast-paced. One of the things that I wanted to remind you about is, as we talked about, the importance of, of having the restaurant onboard early in the process and selecting the restaurant so that they were involved with the programming and validation. Piece of it where we figure out how much space we need for what, et cetera. And so, a little later in the agenda, we actually have a contract with, with Bird Realty for, as the restaurant broker. And we're going to be, be beginning that process very quickly so that we can go through a process of selection. Katie spent some time talking about the selection process at the last council meeting. But I did want to take the opportunity to introduce you to Doug Bird and Sharon Reynolds with the Bird Real Estate Group. And they specialize in, among other, among other things, they specialize in restaurant and food hospitality. And in your packets, you'll see a marketing plan that they have put together for soliciting potential restaurants, restaurant proposers. And also in your package, you're going to see a list of the more recent restaurant and hospitality recruitments. And it includes Pizza Hut, Starbucks, Forza Coffee, Brew Cheese, For Your Earth, Clark's Fork, Dan, Jack and Dan's, Peter Pit, Dry Fly in the downtown Spokane, in the Press Building, Common Language Brewery and Tempest Cellar. So they've got really quite a bit of experience under the background, or in their background. And I'd like to take just a second to introduce Doug Bird and Sharon. Doug, Sharon, would you like to, would you like to say anything?
Hello, everyone.
Real quick, I apologize. We do have a councilmember with a hand up before we go on. I apologize. Go ahead, Councilmember Receivers.
Mayor, I'm happy to defer till after Doug Bird speaks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Doug Bird with Bird Real Estate Group. I've been in the commercial real estate industry for, I think, more than 35 years. And Sharon Reynolds is my administrative assistant. She's been with me 15-plus years. This seems to be a very exciting project to move forward. We are looking forward to the process.
Thank you for that introduction. I know, so go ahead, Councilmember Receivers. And I think there's probably a couple more questions coming.
Lisa, question about the design build process here. We've had a lot of conceptual design conversations in the past. Should we, should the council expect that the design build process is going to take the conceptual designs and move those design concepts forward? Or should we expect a complete redesign of the design build process?
So I, I think that we have the, all the information that, and all of the, the scenarios that were developed as part of the, the Staples workshops out on our website or on an FTP site and available to all the proposers. We're not starting, we're not starting at square one. We're not going back to the beginning. And we will, we will be working with the design build team through that. And you will periodic updates on what's coming forward. So again, the intent is that we will build upon what we've already done. And then a great example of that is, has to do with looking at the driving range and the netting for the driving range. And Chris Johnston, he did quite a bit of research on that and has a consultant. And we'll be bringing all the work that he's done, all the legwork to the table to, as part of the, the design process and selection of that specialized vendor. Did I answer your question, Councilmember Receivers?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If I could follow up on what Lisa just said. Not as big of a part of it as Lisa is, but having listened in on many of the conversations. I get the sense that right now, we're in the process of putting the big puzzle pieces together. So we have all representative parties at the table to bring all the concepts that have been discussed and maybe come up with some new ones to give some options to the council. Is that about right, Lisa?
That is absolutely spot on.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I, I think what I'd like to have a little more clarification, Lisa. What I'm hearing is that, am I hearing we're going to have form other committees to bring forward ideas on what to do with the building and the, the facility?
That, no. That is what the role of the design build team is. We will be bringing information back to council and doing check-ins periodically as. as this is evolving and developing and getting feedback from, from the council. But no, there, we may, we, as county, as Katie had outlined at the last meeting, we, we will be going out for proposals for restaurants. And we will be having a committee that looks at those proposals. Actually, I think council member Dunn had suggested that we might even try thought exchange as a way to get feedback from our community before the decision is made. But the decision will be the council's decision in terms of what restaurant we go forward with.
Thank you, Lisa.
If nobody, I've got a couple, go ahead, councilmember Langford, because I've got a couple questions too.
Just a couple of questions. One, appreciate you bringing forth Bird Real Estate. Were there any other considerations besides that one firm?
So again, as I indicated, this restaurant brokering is, is kind of a specialized field. We did not, I actually did some research online to see who locally in our region had the experience. And it was, we identified Bird. We also identified NAI Black. I've had the opportunity of seeing the work that, that Bird has done when I was director for planning in the city of Spokane. They've done a lot of great work. I was familiar with them. Again, time, timing of the essence to get a broker onboard so that we can, so that we can this election process in parallel and have the restaurateur onboard when we get to the programming piece of this very aggressive schedule.
Thank you, Lisa. The answer is no.
The answer is no.
Thank you. And you were with, well, doesn't have, thank you for your answer. I just want to let this statement that I'm going to make rest on its own laurels and for people that are interested to pay attention to it. We are building a golf course with a restaurant, not a restaurant with a golf course. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just, as an add-on to Lisa's answer, I did have the opportunity to come today to talk with Rebecca from John L. Scott here in Liberty Lake. I had sent you a text on that earlier.
Excuse me, point of order, point of order. I believe that this could be a discussion when we have the motion to vote on this under action item three.
Well, I was addressing councilmember Langford's answer, but yes.
That's why I wanted to make a point of order. I think we're getting into a debate and information which should be, I believe, in, when there was a motion in second and any comments.
I'll answer the question then, then. Okay. Can't say then, then? All right, thanks. So are there any, are there any further questions or anything else for your proposal, Lisa, on Trailhead? I do have one question though. I know what SOQ is to me. Can you define what it is for you?
Statement of qualifications. And I would like to make one point in answering, in answering council member Langford's comment. We did follow our financial policy as it relates to professional service contracts. We are, we do not necessarily have to go out and seek proposals. Quotes doesn't even really make sense since the broker's fees are standardized. So I did, I did want, I did want you to be aware that we, this, that this approach is consistent with our financial policy.
I appreciate that very much, and I don't want to get into an argument over with you. Nor do I want to try to attempt to make anybody feel bad, okay, or embarrass anybody. But because it falls within the policy, doesn't necessarily mean that due diligence was followed. I'm not saying that you did not do that. I'm simply making the overall statement that one does not necessarily preclude the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Lisa, did you have anything else on Trailhead?
That was, that, that was it. And again, we have the, we do have the action later in, on the agenda for the broker's agreement.
Great. All right. I don't see any other questions from the council. So if you want to jump to the capital facilities plan workshop.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, next slide, please. So you're going to find the CFP starting on page 33 of your packet. And I want to just give you a little bit of the context. What you're looking at is the format that you have seen in prior years. We will be reformatting this to make this more accessible and easier to digest. But for, to kick off our conversations, we really wanted to give it to you in the same format that you're used to seeing. And so next slide, please. Couple of things I just want to point out in terms of how you read this. So first of all, we start with the base of what was adopted for the 2021 through 2026 capital facility plan. We also, we also updated based upon the 2022 through 2027 transportation improvement program that you just adopted in June. And so all those updates are in there. Additionally, we, we update things based upon new cost information, new trends. We adjust the timing of things based upon what we were able to accomplish this year versus what might get deferred to next year to balance work, workload as well as budget. And generally, new information becomes, new information becomes available. So I want you to note that when we have the dollar amounts, projects with grant funding reflect the full expenditure proposed because generally that's, our grants come in as a reimbursement. Also, the additions and updated amounts are, updated amounts or years are shown in red. Deletions are noted as, in red as strike throughs. And we do provide an explanation for the reason for the changes notes column, generally speaking. Next slide, please. Next slide, please, Todd. Um, oh, I'm sorry. Can you go back one slide? That was, sorry. So again, this is, this is intended to kick off the conversation. And we can have as many workshops as you feel are necessary and appropriate. We won't publish a proposed capital facilities plan, the final proposed capital facilities plan. So we can continue to work on this up until your meeting on November 16th. I do have to publish the proposed capital facilities plan by November 22nd for SEPA and public hearing notices, et cetera. And we will have the public hearing and the first read of the capital facility ordinance on December 7th with it being adopted on the 21st with whatever amendments you so choose. And it, but it has to follow that same schedule because of, because of the budget. And it needs to be adopted in the same timeframe as the budget. Today's workshop, I'm going to focus principally on the 2022 expenditures. But happy to talk about any other questions you have, any other comments that you have. Next slide, please. So the funding, the request that we had in 2022 for facilities include Trailhead and that spread out over three years. As you know, you've made a budget amendment. We have $400,000 in 2021. We're estimating that we will spend $5.3 million in 2022 with the balance spent in 2023. And this is as based upon your, this is based upon your, um, your, the workshop that, where you basically moved forward with the funding proposal. I will make a note that when we get into, that we, when we get into facility and asset management, there is an error on the spreadsheet and that we need to zero, zero out Trailhead Asset Management for 2022 through 2027 based on the new construction project. And so we had a placeholder for essential maintenance items. Were we not moving forward with Trailhead? And so my apologies on that. Public Works Yard. So we do have, we're proposing $1,000, one, or $1,080,000 for the building and final site improvements with $510,000 that was funded in 2021 being deferred to 2022. What you're seeing with the, the increase has to do with increased costs for building materials, supply chain issues, et cetera, et cetera. And that is our most current cost estimate from the engineer. We do have $75,000 in 2021 for design and for any beginning work that's done. We anticipate having the, the design complete and going out to bid this year with construction happening next year. Library facility upgrades, we've got $100,000 as requested by the library board of trustees. Public art, we have $34,000 based upon the request by Parks and Arts Commission. And again, facility asset management, I want to pause for a second here. So there is 1.5 million in change for prioritized asset management projects, including work at Pavilion and Rocky Hill Parks and City Hall. Big chunk of this, however, is the, is the cost estimate for the City Hall parking lot. And I recognize that it's almost a million dollars for that parking lot once we figured in the, all the things that our asset management project told us we needed to do. Not just the repaving, but reconfiguring it, dealing with stormwater, replacement, replacement of lights, et cetera. And so that, that price tag is a little hefty. We looked at, we looked at another, another scaled back version that would basically, we could have, just by doing some minor improvements, we could add about eight more parking spaces with, at a cost of about $35,000 per space. So that was a nonstarter also. But I didn't want to put it out there because we do have, we are approaching max capacity at City Hall for parking in with potential staff increases next year. That's, it's going to be an issue of concern. So I have it in there. You know what the cost is based upon the engineer's estimate. And that's something for, for future discussion. Also, we have some facility asset management dollars for the library and the police station. Next slide, please.
Bobby.
Mayor, well, actually I see councilmember receiver's hand and then mayor for town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, the, the City Hall parking spaces, you're looking at the eight additional parking spaces or any additional parking spaces. Does that, are you taking into consideration the number of city employees who will move to the new facility out on Kramer Parkway or Kramer Road or?
Yes. So my understanding is, my understanding is that everybody who is going to move out there is already out there in the temporary trailers. And so, so that's, again, the 954,000 that, that was reflected in the capital facilities plan will address, our lighting is, is inefficient and it's actually, it needs to be replaced. Our storm water is, the storm water is substandard. The pavement is ravelling and basically falling apart. So those are all things that we, we were aware of in our asset management program. The actual reconfiguration of the parking lot, we estimate that we can improve the, by, by just reconfiguring it, we can get about 30% more parking in that parking lot. So, but again, the price tag is, is hefty.
Thank you.
Mayor for town.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Lisa. Could we go back to the previous slide? I'm looking at for library and police department. I might have missed this. Library and police department, what is anticipated for those two, those facilities for the money that is being possibly earmarked?
I'm going to let Jen Camp respond to that question.
Yes, so I have a list from the asset software of projects that are coming due. They can be re-prioritized depending on the amount the budget can handle. But that's, that's the load of projects that are slated to be due for 2022. I will have a breakdown of those projects in a, in a summary that Lisa's going to put together with the CFP. So it'll summarize library and PD facility and it'll, it'll give a breakdown of those said projects.
And you can give us an update on, on that? Can you send that to us?
You bet.
Yeah. I, I do want to say that several years ago when we looked at adding that, that software, great software. Outstanding. It was the first time we were able to look at the entire city, at all of our properties, everything like that, and start to get dollar amounts for wear and tear and preventive maintenance. So I think it's a great program. Thank you.
I think, I thought I saw another hand up. Did it go down? Guess we're all good. Go ahead, Lisa.
Next slide. Thank you. So Kramer Overpass and roadway extension, we don't have the dollar amounts yet in the capital facilities plan because we are waiting for Wash Dot to give us the updated figures. And as you know, as we talked about, that we're not expecting those until a little bit later in the, in the fall. Also, Legacy Ridge Country Vista Signal. As I indicated to you, that's out to bid right now. We might see a little bit of work done this year. But, but the work, the actual construction is not going to happen until the fall. So we have kind of deferred some of the dollars. It is an increase based upon the engineer's cost estimate with cost of materials, et cetera, increases that we've seen. So this is, the figure has been updated to reflect our current market. Country Vista rebuild, we're proposing $135,000 for design of, and that's the project that's looking at, replacing the pavement, putting in the, the landscape medians, doing improvements to the, possibly adding a multimodal trail in some way, shape or form, south side of Country Vista. And we're proposing to do the design in 2022 to set the table for us to go after grant funding for that project. Again, with the assumption that some, some form of an infrastructure program is going to be coming forward.
Lisa, for the public's clarification, is this Country Vista West, Liberty Lake Road, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. From Liberty Lake Road, basically to our city limits to the west. My apologies. Also, we do have the design for the, for intersection improvements at Country Vista Boulevard and Apple Way, $40,000 for design with the intention to construct in 2023. And one of the reasons why we have that broken out that way is because it's not clear whether or not we're going to. is because it's not clear whether or not we're going to need to, uh, acquire a little bit of right of way to do that. So that's, that's why we have it in, in two separate years. Um, stormwater master plan, you see two hundred thousand dollars in there for the, for our grant funded stormwater master plan. One of these days, we will be getting a, uh, the grant contract coming forward to you. The state's been pretty, uh, slow at turning that around, which is, given our current load, that's okay. Um, but, uh, that is, um, the, that is a grant funded project. What, one of the things that you will see new this year in the capital facilities uh, project is, um, a hundred thousand dollars per year for project development. That is something that is, um, that we will, a- as we saw with Kramer Parkway, when we had the problems with Kramer and the roadway basically blew up this year. Um, we had to, we had to move forward, even though we didn't have monies budgeted at that point in time. And so we, so, so, um, what I'd like to propose uh, for your consideration is that we have this hundred thousand to deal with those types of emergency situations where we know we're gonna, we're something, where we need to develop a plan so that we can, um, address it. And, um, uh, uh, again, it's not money that we will, it's, it's money that we will not use if we don't have such a situation. But it enables us to get into the design work for some of these, um, issues that arise. Um, also, you're gonna see under asset management, um, we have in the past budgeted fifty thousand dollars a year for street maintenance. We're proposing to increase that to a hundred thousand dollars. As you know, the repair project that we did on Kramer Parkway, the repair project we did on Mission Avenue, all the, uh, these projects generally don't come in, uh, uh, that they have been more to the tune of a hundred thousand than they have been to fifty thousand. So the intent is to have a sufficient fund again to, to address those types of unplanned, um, issues that arise during the year that need to be addressed immediately. And finally, the, the, uh, Kramer, oh, I'm sorry, it says Kramer Parkway. Oh, yes, Kramer Parkway partial reconstruction, which you just funded the design for, or you just approved the, the for at the last council meeting. We have, the engineer's estimate on this project is one point five two million. But we did, it, it, we have submitted a TIB grant application. We're pretty confident in, uh, the proposal, um, and so, so approximately seventy percent of that uh, may be funded by TIB and we won't know that until November. Next slide, please. Uh, as for trails and pedestrian projects, um, so we have, we, we have, because of, um, the cost savings that we had on this year's projects, we, we have about eighty-six thousand dollars that is being deferred from two thousand twenty-one into two thousand twenty-two. And the three hundred thousand dollars that we have proposed would cover our cost estimates for Bitterroot and Mission, Boone and Malvern, Boone and Stevenson, Country Vista and Sharp and Harvest Parkway and, and Nora. Certainly, um, you may consider spreading that out over a couple of years. Um, but again, we front loaded it, um, uh, for the same reason that you front loaded last year's. And so, so it's, uh, that is, uh, certainly something for your consideration, but, um, those are the projects that, that we have identified. Um, future years, um, these are projects that have already been identified. Future years will likely be, um, identified through this, the, um, the sidewalk master plan. Um, also, I wanted to bring to your attention that, uh, the sidewalk gap on Mission between Aladdin and Caulfield, which you funded this year, um, uh, we are doing the design and bid this year. Um, in fact, we have design concepts that we're talking to the property owners about. Um, it will be bid this year for construction in the spring. Um, so a hundred and fifty thousand of the funds that you, um, uh, budgeted for this year, we're proposing to defer to two thousand twenty-two. And lastly, asset management, we're proposing fifty thousand dollars a year for sidewalk and trail maintenances as a way to kind of keep that funded, um, that obviously the, the, um, issues a- as our city ages, we're having more and more issues with heaping sidewalks, et cetera. And we have a grinding program. The grinding requests have grown so much that, uh, the most cost effective way to deal with it is to contract for. Also, we have, um, we have, uh, trail projects that need to be, um, repaved, et cetera, through the course of the year. And so this is just a way to kind of address some of those. Next slide.
Before we go on, um, Councilmember Seavers has a question and I've got one too.
Yes, could we go back to the last slide real quick?
The one previous to that.
There we go. Lisa, you propose a hundred thousand dollar project development, um, uh, part in our budget. You propose this as an annual hundred thousand dollars or a, uh, or like a new, um, uh, and a new line item where we, where we keep a hundred thousand dollars total there. Once, one time or every year, we want to add, add a hundred thousand dollars to this.
It's an, it's an annual. However, if we have, if we have no, um, emergencies that arise, we have no, um, uh, projects that we need to move forward more quickly. Um, if we don't use it, it just, it would, it would, it would roll into the next year. And again, it's still, it's still, it's council's decision whether or not to approve contracts in this area to address these types of unexpected uh, challenges that we're presented with. Again, the example-
And let me be clear.
Sure.
Sorry, I, let me, I very much appreciate your proactive nature here to, to make this a hundred thousand dollars. I guess, just to be clear, if we didn't use it next year, you would propose we add another hundred thousand dollars next year, so it'd be two hundred thousand dollars the following year?
No, it, I, I'm, I'm suggesting that we keep a pot of a hundred thousand dollars on the table for contingencies that arise. No more, no-
Same with the fifty dollars that you proposed and?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Lisa.
Hugh, Hugh, the way I see this, um, is something we, we will talk about during the director's meeting tomorrow. We do something simple.
Mayor, we lost your audio, I think.
Mayor, it's, you're muted.
I think the connection to the conference room user has been interrupted.
Now's when we need Jeopardy music.
It seems like this happens every year at this-
Phil, that's why we appreciate you being here.
Lisa, can you hear us?
I can. Would you like me to continue?
Yeah, no, I just want to point a clarification. The hundred, the hundred thousand dollars that you and, uh, Hugh have been talking about is falls under transportation projects as a, just in case, kind of a line item.
Exactly, exactly.
Cause I thought I heard Hugh say parks and art, but it's transportation.
It's transportation. There was another, there was fifty thousand dollars in sidewalk also. Sidewalk maintenance that was, but that's on the next slide.
Thank you.
All right, I did not say parks and art. I don't, don't know how the audio came out that way.
Not parks and art. I can confirm that. And they're working on the audio in council chambers. Thanks, Jen.
A way to slip that in there, Phil.
All right. Return to our regularly scheduled program.
Ah, okay, so can somebody go back to last week's meeting and see if we lost audio at about the same time into the meeting? Kind of watch for a trend here. Sorry, everybody.
Madam Mayor, it does seem like this is the third meeting that it's happened kind of right about this time.
Yep, yep, we'll check that pattern and see what we can figure out. So I apologize, everybody. Mayor Pro Tim.
Well, Madam Mayor, unfortunately, if we've lost it, maybe we should have Lisa start all over again.
So apologize once again, and it definitely was not my feet. I have suspected myself, but I guess that's not it. So I apologize.
You were, you were, Mayor, you were talking about the director's meeting tomorrow in regards to the hundred thousand dollar project development.
Okay, um, yeah, so I know, we, we have a fund that, that we use, that we have a set aside a hundred thousand, a rolling kind of a hundred thousand dollars for emergency repairs like when we need to do the roof repair at, uh, uh, at the library many years ago. It's set at a hundred, if we, um, if we use twenty thousand, we just lose the next, but next year's budget, twenty thousand to replenish that. So I, I will make sure that we discuss that tomorrow at the director's meeting and bring that back, um, as a possible alternative to putting a hundred thousand dollars in every year because that kind of gives us, uh, doesn't give us real data looking forward in a forecast if we see a hundred thousand dollars each year, if we're, we're not, we don't still spend it or not. But just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't know, is there, is there any further questions? I thought I had seen Councilmember Dunn's hand, but you may guys, you guys may have, uh, touched that. Okay.
I just have two questions.
Care for Tim?
At, at, at the very end of her presentation.
We'll wait then. Go ahead, Lisa.
Next slide, please. So, um, other funding requests for two thousand twenty-two, we have new fleet equipment totaling a hundred and ninety-five thousand. And, and if you have any questions on specific details in that, um, please feel free to bring them forward. Fleet rotation is another two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And we've got a little bit over sixty thousand in technology, um, proposed. Any questions? Next slide. Last thing I just wanted to share with you is the format change. So if you recall, we changed the format in our transportation improvement plan this last June. And we're going to follow a similar format for each chapter. Um, so each section will be its own chapter. Um, we will combine capital and asset management under each of the categories. We'll differentiate them, but it, but it will be just as one a- as one, uh, uh, area, um, because frankly, in some cases, uh, the line between a capital project and an asset management project, they're all capital projects. But capital investment versus an asset management investment, um, uh, is somewhat gray. Um, we will have a summary overview of the highlights in each section. A spreadsheet with the, uh, projects and years proposed in each section. A brief, and then brief project descriptions at the end. And then we'll have an, in, we'll have an executive summary for the entire CFP, um, as we have done in past years, so that you can kind of see the big picture, high level, and then the detail in each chapter. So that's what's, when you see this again, it's going to come back in this format. Um, uh, assuming that you don't schedule a workshop for two weeks from today. Um, and really with that, I stand for any questions, um, uh, or, or any, I'd really like to, I'd really like to get some feedback from you, um, as to when you would, if and when you would like to schedule additional workshops.
All right, well, um, we'll go ahead and start with questions and then we'll look at the workshops, um, at the other part of the meeting. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, most of which, combination question and, um, recommendation, the format, um, when we started this three, four years ago, I love the for- format of it. The nice thing is, I think we get the opportunity to refine it where it gets better and better. One thing that's been discussed quite often with the council that I would recommend for the council to seriously look at, make this change would be this. We have our priorities and we rate them. The confusion is, when we're talking to the public, is that they get confused because they will look at something and say, okay, we have twenty items and number five or six is important apparently to you, but there's no funding. Our recommendation would be is to be able to break down where we have what the priority is, where we have funding. And then below that, and I love the color scheme, below that would have the priorities that aren't funded. And as we look at something and discuss it, and we decide it's going to be funded, then add it up to that list. I think you can see the confusion when the public is, it comes in, and I'll use the format of the Parks and Public Facilities capital bridge prioritization matrix. What's setting, what we've always done in the past and works effectively, if a council member wants to bring, let me use myself for example. If I want to bring something forward to get on here, just because I'm a council member and I want one item, doesn't mean that I should have priority to get that on there. What we've done, when we first started this, the council was asked, what are the things you're interested in? And we would have it on the list, and then we would have a meeting where the council would talk about these items. And if the majority of the council felt that this idea was, had merit, we added it to the list. The confusion comes, and I'll use what we have now, and I'm going to use a community pool, for example. That was, has never really been discussed at any length at a council meeting to put that back on there. Same with the dog park. Citizens have come forward and requested that, and a council member requested it, no different than I would have. But for that to be a priority in my mind, the council needs to discuss this and say, okay, we want this on this list. So two things. I think it's important, we separate what our priorities are, that are funded. Then have our priorities that aren't funded. When they become funded, move them up to that. It's a lot easier when we're talking to the citizens. And number two, nothing gets added to this that the council hasn't discussed and said, yes, we would like to have that on there. If not, we're going to have things thrown on here that maybe one or two people want. And then what happens, it gets on the list, it never gets off. So I think we're really going in the right direction. I really appreciate everybody's, uh, effort to make this right. Thank you.
Okay. We've got council member Dunn and then council member Seavers.
Uh, thanks. Lisa, earlier, there was a swing at making a prioritization and it sounded like not everyone had responded. Did you collect all the responses from council members?
I did, all but, all but one council member. Todd, can you go to the next slide, please? And there's what we have.
Okay.
And I have it for all three, if, if you want. I didn't know whether you wanted to talk about these tonight or not, but, um, uh, this is the facilities one.
Okay. Um, I'd like to also then offer an alternative perspective on prioritization with funding or without. Um, I believe that establishing priority does not necessarily need to say for what is funded because there may be funding available, but because it's not a priority, it has not been investigated. Uh, for example, there might be a project that has, um, low priority, but that there's a grant immediately available to provide it. It'll never be investigated. So suggestion, I believe the priority actually should, um, not include a funding basis because it allows staff to discover that funding may actually be, be available. Thanks.
And, and just a, a quick note on, on this graphic, I think each one of us kind of, um, approaches this different. So just because you see zeros from people doesn't mean it's not on their mind. Again, personally for me, I, I look at the ones that are funded first. Um, we've got council member Seavers and then council member Garcia.
I, yeah, I just want to respond to the prioritization and funding. I, I agree with both council member Dunn and Mayor Pro Tim on this. And I want to just offer a suggestion that I think the same matrix could, uh, could call out items that have been discussed and have been funded by council. Uh, and I think that would be greatly valuable just to show. It doesn't necessarily have to show funding, funded projects at the top. They may just need to show funded projects on the list through an asterisk or- They may just need to show funded projects on the list through an asterisk or something like that, where citizens can, can view it and see that this is something that council has discussed, has funded, and there are other projects that council has not discussed and is not funded. Um, and, and I guess I'd just reflect on previous conversations of council. There are projects on here that have not, that they've been funded, and there's also, um, items, I, I think, I don't want to put words in somebody's mouth, but I think, uh, Councilmember Langford may have mentioned this some years back, that there are projects on here that might be big dollar items, that might be over a million dollars, for instance, and projects on here that might be smaller dollar items that might just be ten or fifteen or thirty thousand dollars. And it's easier to get a fifteen or thirty thousand dollar project completed, even though it might not be the priority of the city, and it's tricky to, to prioritize those over each other. For instance, public work building or trailhead facility upgrade, those are big dollar items. Uh, whereas shade structure in Rocky Hill Park, uh, might be a smaller dollar item, easier to accomplish to say, well, it's only a twenty thousand dollar item. Doesn't supersede the public works building or the trailhead facility upgrade, but it's a smaller dollar item that we agree is a good project and we should just do it. And so I, I guess I just somehow want to reflect, how do we show that on, on these matrices? Um, and I think, I think we could show the priorities the same, and it shows some sort of asterisk that this has been funded or this has not been funded. To be a little bit clearer on what the dollar items are for budget purposes.
I can absolutely do that. And the other thing is that in the matrices that I sent out, I actually did include the dollar amounts. But for purposes of trying to make this fit on the screen, I took the dollar amounts out.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Um, in reference to this prioritization, I, I, in my ranking, there were a lot that I did not rank. And mainly because over the years, I've listened to, um, the unfunded items continue to be unfunded. And so there was a recommendation from Mayor Protem Kennedy to have some sort of ranking order where we take the unfunded items and maybe, uh, put them separately or move them up the ladder. Um, in particular, uh, the trailhead facility upgrade, I ranked it, um, I ranked it lowest because, uh, frankly, as I listen to the deliberations, I see, and, and it may be, uh, an argument to be had, um, that eight point four million dollars is, is quite a large sum of money. And when we look at that large sum of money, although you have deliberated over it time and time again, or recent times, then I look at, um, the, are we being good stewards to the taxpayer dollars insofar as, um, that facility mainly takes care of a smaller portion of our population, and it leaves the lion's share of our population, um, not attended to. Ie, I think that the community is now speaking more broadly about centers, uh, senior centers, more things for children, uh, more things for our young adults to enjoy themselves in. Uh, but I don't see on this matrices that, um, that we're looking at that. And so my hope would be, uh, for example, let's just use the dog park, for example. We've had people come to the podium when the facilities were open and talk about wanting a dog park facility. While we all know the importance of dog socialization, et cetera, et cetera, it still remains unfunded. So, um, instead of just giving it a ranking, I knew it was going to fall on deaf ears anyway and come back as unfunded. So, um, I want to be able to have the opportunity that we take some of these things more seriously. Um, and I'd like to be open to having some sort of workshop. Now that we've seen this, now people see what our rankings are, they don't get to really hear why we ranked something a certain way. They need to because it's important. It doesn't mean that it's not relevant, but there was an importance of it. Um, I didn't have enough discussion on some areas, so I couldn't rank them. Uh, for example, public art, I don't know why, um, I wish that those folks who, um, thought of thirty-four point five thousand dollars would have raised the ante a little bit more, perhaps fifty grand, because we know steel and things like that, the cost of those things are going to be twice as much in twenty twenty-two. So I'd like to give them an opportunity to revisit that. So maybe if we can look at a workshop, I, I don't know, if we can look at a workshop and then really sincerely bring the citizens to the table and give them, um, the tools they need to visit this along with, with the government, so that we now have a broader idea of what they want, instead of continuing, and, and it is honorable, but to continue to say, here's what we thought, here's what we looked at, here's what we, but the we is not inclusive of all of the they out there um, who didn't have that opportunity. So maybe just opening up that box one more time, or a couple more times, more than once, um, to revisit some of these things so that we really know when we're ranking them, while we're ranking, we have to be good stewards of their money. And that means to ask them to come back into the conversation. I ask for that consideration amongst my colleagues to consider, please. Thank you.
Or any other comments on the capital facilities plan? We'll look at the, uh, the workshop agendas, it's like I said, later in the meeting. Okay, oh, there you go, Councilmember Fuller.
But thank you, Mayor. Lisa, great job, lovely presentation. I can't wait to dive into it, a lot of information. Would you do me a favor and send me your PowerPoint presentation so I can collect my thoughts and get them all on paper for our next meeting?
Absolutely. In fact, I will send it to all of the, all of the council members, and there are some slides in the back of the presentation that kind of summarized just all the changes that, that, uh, in, in the, in the plan as well, so that you may find that helpful also.
And Mayor, if I can, just one last thought on the matrix. Um, maybe, maybe the end result is, uh, super accurate, because as I look at these, these scores, everybody has a different version of how they score priority. Um, and there's nothing wrong with any one of them, it's just I scored differently than, than other people. For me, it's zero through nine concept. Obviously, the, I'm the only one that's done that, so maybe it's a little more, it's a little more discussion on, uh, what the meeting of the score is in relationship to Ivan. Thank you.
Uh, just one quick addition, Lisa, for consideration. Uh, there's another, um, crossing that maybe we need to look at for the future. It is on a safe route to school, but it is next to a couple streets that didn't really exist in the last year or so, and that's at Blue Ridge and Country Vista. Um, there's a lot of kids that walk, um, from there towards school, and it's hard for them to get from the east side of the street to the west side where the continuous trail is, so, um, if we can take a look at that. And anybody else who, obviously, you know, anything's brought to their attention, how we get these things done. All right, so if there's no other questions, we will move on from the capital facility plan into general business.
Very good, Madam Mayor, thank you. Under general business, a consent agenda, make a motion to approve the September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting minutes. Item two, approve the September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one special city council meeting minutes. And item three, approve the October fifth, two thousand twenty-one vouchers in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
Okay, we got a second from Councilmember Langford. Any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor of approving consent agenda items one, two, and three, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Councilmember Garcia, I just want to make sure you were a bit delayed. Just want to make sure I get, get your vote, or is that out of game?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, ayes have it, vote passes seven to zero. Now on to action items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Action item one, motion to approve purchase of liquid deice and granular salt.
Second.
Got a second, Councilmember Severs. Any discussion or further questions? Not hearing any. All in favor of approving the purchase of liquid deice and granular salt, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? All right, ayes have it, seven to zero.
Very good. Action item two, motion authorize the mayor to sign a three-year lease agreement for Baco with three equal installments of fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Severs. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, just a quick point.
Go ahead, Councilmember Severs and Councilmember Fuller.
Sorry, uh, funny clarification, um, in, in reading the lease agreement, um, I'm not sure if I captured it correctly, but that, it looks to me like after the end of the three years, can we purchase the Baco for essentially eighty thousand dollars and minus roughly forty thousand dollars a year that we put in? I'm going to, I'm going to round numbers and call that forty-five thousand dollars that we put in. Can we buy it for fifty-five thousand dollars in three years if we, if we so choose?
Stephen, are you able to respond?
Yeah. Can you guys hear me that?
We can.
Yep. Okay, yeah, so the purchase price would be the eighty thousand dollars. That is the balloon payment at the end of the lease if we so choose. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Fuller.
Oh, yes, that was, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Councilmember Severs.
Oh, that was your question? Okay, great. Any further questions? All right, not hearing any. All in favor of authorizing the agreement for Baco, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, ayes have it, seven to zero. We have a Baco.
It sounds like we really have caused you something. We, we better have a Baco. That's great. Love it. Action item number three, motion to approve professional service agreement for a broker.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Severs is the second. All right, discussion.
In the amount though?
Um, if you read the contract, it's based on, it's a percentage of the final, did I describe that correctly? Okay, Councilmember Ford.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I had, um, two questions. The first one, you guys kind of touched on a little bit in the previous discussion, but I wanted to understand, um, what the opportunity for the community's input in, um, in selection of a restaurant, what that would be. Um, if you could kind of lay that out for me again, and then I have one other question.
Lisa, did you want to take that, go through that process?
Yeah, so, um, we are open to, um, input from council members in terms of how to approach this. I think Katie suggested, or the mayor suggested at the last meeting that, um, each council member could suggest a person to participate on the selection committee. Um, Councilmember Dunn also had suggested that we, we get, we solicit some feedback from the community through, um, thought exchange. Um, and, uh, but at the end of the day, so the, the committee will make a recommendation to council, um, ultimately, um, or possibly just a ranking even. Um, and that, uh, that we would bring it back to city council. Um, again, uh, part of the proposal will have to do, um, kind of the negotiations that, um, that the broker, that the, the broker assists us with. And there's a number of different ways you could structure a, um, contract for a restaurant. Um, so, but, but all of that will come back to council for a final decision.
So at some point in the future, we'll decide, um, what, how to get community input? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Yes, and, and, yes.
Okay. Um, and then my second question, if I may, um, is in the, in the contract, it talked about the highest and best use of the land or of the, the space. And I wanted to understand a little bit more from this particular contract, what that, what that means, um, for, for this project.
So I'd like to defer that question to Doug Bird.
Okay.
Still here, there's, I see Doug. Doug, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Yeah, highest and best use. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Highest and best use would pertain to the particular restaurateur that we would negotiate with a lease and the type of space that is developed. I, I expect that we'll have many, uh, lease opportunities with different restaurateurs out there. So it'll be a matter, one through that process. That answer your question?
Um, maybe, but I'm not sure if I have a follow-up question to get my own clarity on it, so I apologize for that. So I don't, I don't think I have another question, no, thank you.
Thank you. I've got Councilmember Severs next.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this question, I, I think this question is more for Mr. Bird. Um, that, my question pertains to the timeline, and there was a suggestion earlier that, uh, we're under a very tight timeline on, uh, engaging your services and a restaurateur as soon as possible. I certainly understand the design of the building and how that, uh, affects somebody's desire to occupy that space, but uh, we're talking about a twenty twenty-three, uh, finish date. Can you talk a little bit about timeline and, and why we're under such a crunch right now to engage your services?
I think right now, we need to put this out to the world, see what kind of interest we would have, and listen to the proposals so that they could be part of this, uh, process for the, for the.
If I might, if I may add or tack on to that, um, the thought process is that even to do a shell restaurant that, um, the, the layout, um, and the flow within the kitchen area can be very different from, from restaurant to restaurant. And we felt it was important to get them in so that they're on board as part of the, uh, design process. Again, that's the beauty of progressive design build. The other thing that I think is important, so, so, so that's part of it, and, and yes, we're just building a shell. But the potential exists that, um, that, uh, once we have, i- if they're part of that process, then they can get their design piece done, and they could either contract with the, with, uh, the GC to do their work at the same time as they're doing trailhead, or they could be working in parallel, um, at the same time to try and, um, to, to get their work done. But, but again, the, my understanding is that it's important that we have them at the table so that we understand what space and configuration, um, works within their, within their business model.
And that might be different for different restaurants.
Exactly.
But I expect that we'll be providing it as a, a vanilla shell, a warm vanilla shell.
And I, and I greatly appreciate, um, both of your input. I guess my concern comes back to why we sign on with, uh, the Bird Group today. Um, and, and I apologize, Mr. Bird, I, I just, this is the first. Um, and, and I apologize, Mr. Bird, I, I just, this is the first I'm, uh, getting associated with you and your firm. And I greatly appreciate Lisa's insight, um, and experience with you guys, but why the urgency to sign on today versus get to vet out a couple of other firms who may have similar, uh, commercial and restaurateur, um, uh, experience.
Sure. I think, uh, whoever you choose, I think it's important to start marketing that project now. Um, so they, they can go through the design and build process. I do think it's important to start marketing it now.
So, if I may, Councilmember receivers, um, the challenge that we have in the schedule for, for the Trailhead project is the fact that, um, to get, to go through a proposal process from, from developing the, the RFP through the selection to getting it on a council agenda, um, I could not do it any faster than six weeks. And again, if, if you take a look at the schedule that we, that, that, um, we're gonna have, we're, we're, we're gonna have our design builder on board December seventh. And we're gonna be done with programming and validation, um, by the beginning of March.
I, I might add a challenge is December seventh, we have the design builder on board. But we don't have the designs completed on December seventh. We've got the design builder on board, so I just want to put it out there to council for consideration that, um, if it's a six-week process to find a uh, qualified, uh, commercial realtor, and, and I don't doubt that the Bird Group is a qualified commercial realtor here. I, I just want to throw out there that we've got a little bit of time to, if we wanted to vet out other potential, o- only for sake of a vetting process.
I've got Councilmember Langford, then I think Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Dunn.
Hi, guys. Thanks for the discussion. I appreciate it a lot. Uh, I concur with what, uh, Councilmember Severs has, has said. You know, we've been discussing Trailhead for literally years, okay? And now, all of a sudden, we got hard deadlines set in front of us. And these deadlines, and I'm not, I'm not saying it could or would happen, I'm just saying it's, it's a possibility that we limit the pool of interested restaurateurs by being in a herd. By limiting their time to participate, to think about it, to confer, especially with a larger organization. Mom and pops or one store, two stores, they can, they can move a little more quickly. But if our intent is to provide the best that we can provide, that requires that we give them opportunity to participate in it. So, I agree. I don't think there's anything wrong with the Bird Real Estate Group. But I haven't heard that there's others out there. We haven't heard from them, what their experience is. Or what they could bring to the table. And it still may be Bird that comes to the top. But I think when we have spent so much time talking about Trailhead, that we spend a little bit longer time talking about our restaurant, getting them to the table, and making the best choice possible, not because we're up against the timeline, but because we've done our due diligence and we know now that this is the best way to go for the people. So thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Severs.
Okay, yeah, Mayor, Mayor Protem, then Councilmember Dunn, then Mayor, uh, then Councilmember Severs, again.
Uh, tha- thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yes, I, I have a concern with this, and I'll say right off the bat, is that I, I, I'm not voting in favor of this, and right away, some of the individuals' minds immediately snap close. And other individuals' minds now have opened up saying, well, why would he do that? First of all, I want to say that the Bird Corporation Company is somebody that I've dealt with over the years, and, and my experience has been absolutely outstanding. I have seen no challenges whatsoever with their reputation. I think they bring to the table. For me, it's always process and procedure and the urgency of it. Process and procedure for me is that I'm one of seven that has a vote of the citizens, and I have an obligation to do as much research as I can to make the right decisions for those citizens. And what I want to look at is that what other companies were contacted or could be contacted. Even if these companies come forward and say, we don't do that, but at least we've gone out and asked the individuals. We're a real estate company right here in Liberty Lake. One thing we're looking at now is that how can we help our businesses? How can we help them to, to do better? Well, the first place we need to start looking is right here in Liberty Lake. So it may be that they don't have an interest, or they don't have the expertise, but I think it's important that we contact these individuals. Because right now, that particular agency that I'm thinking of, they donate a lot of time, effort, and money to the city to help us be as successful as we are. So in no way am I disparaging any words for Bird Corporation. Because I want to reiterate, my experience with them has been absolutely outstanding, running properties that we had, very happy. And no, in no way am I saying that staff could, could have possibly done a better job. It might be looked at, there was an urgency thing here. I want to point something out that for the restaurant, the question for them is square footage. That's the most critical thing for them, my experience shows, is that how much square footage do we have? Because the square footage we're going to allow somebody to have determines what type of a restaurant comes in there. Is it going to be a mom and pop, or is it going to be a chain? So that is almost the most critical thing. So I will be voting no for this. I feel that what we need to do is reach out to other companies, give them the option to say no, even locally here in Liberty Lake. I know that the mayor took it upon herself to contact the local company. I appreciate her doing that. I'm sure you're going to make some comments to that. But it's just out of respect. Uh, once again, nothing against the Bird Corporation. I think when all the dust settles, they're probably going to be the one we're going to select. But I want to be able to say to the citizens that I looked at the choices, and right now, I can't say that, because there was no comparison. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dunn, you're next.
Um, I, I think it is, uh, very important to secure the operator as early, uh, early on in the design build process as possible. Uh, I think that the, um, staff has together brought forward what they think is a suitable partner in the selection process to discover that partner, and that this council will have the opportunity to consider what partners are possible. Um, I support the selection of Bird Real Estate Group, uh, in support of that search. Thank you.
Thank you. I, um, we've got Councilmember Severs, and I'll get back to Councilmember Langford.
Hi, yes, I, um, one, I just want to say, I, I, I very much appreciate the Bird Group being here. I very much appreciate staff selection, but I'll tell you, my decision is out of pure ignorance. I feel ignorant to who the other, uh, potential candidates are for this, and for that reason, I can't support this. Um, on, again, only because I feel ignorant to it. I haven't seen who the, who the competition is. Um, and I think Bird Group, to Mayor Protem's point, may rise to the top and be great, and Mayor Protem has personal experience with them. I think it's wonderful, but me personally, I, I just don't know at this point. I haven't had an opportunity to see who the other candidates might be, and for that reason, I, I feel that a process is needed here to select the, the right, uh, company to move forward.
Thank you. Um, that, Councilmember Langford.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a short statement. I, I appreciate, uh, the Mayor Protem's statement. Uh, I think it is important, especially during the COVID times, having a rather large sum of money to distribute around, and we have to have that started home. And I think it's high time that we, we do incorporate all the resources that we have within Liberty Lake itself. And the, the Mayor Protem said something that was very important. He said, offer them the opportunity to at least say no, but thank you. And, and I do think that's important, because all the charity that we have and that we're trying to do for our businesses should begin here in Liberty Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe I've got Councilmember Kurt's next, and then Councilmember Dunn. I don't know if you put your hand back up, or if that's left from before. Okay, thanks. Go, Councilmember Kurt.
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. I have, um, two questions, I think, for Lisa. Um, Lisa, I think I heard you say earlier in the previous discussion that you had done some research on companies that do this to the brokers that um, focus on the restaurant business. Is that, is that accurate? What it, were there any other businesses around here that you found?
Uh, that is, that is accurate. I did do some, I did do some research. Um, and, uh, the only other one that I found that was, uh, that certainly that was advertising um, in this arena as specializing restaurants was NAI Black.
Okay. Um, thank you, Lisa. One additional question is, um, it sounds like there's a, a few council members who are, are wanting to, um, perhaps have a little bit more time. If you, if we were to delay this vote on a broker until our next meeting, is that, is that a reasonable timeframe? Are you able to connect with the other person and get a yea or a nay? Um, what would that process look like?
I could certainly. So, the challenge with doing a proposal is that you need to set up criteria, you need to have an RFP, you need to have a selection process. Um, I could not, I do, I could not do that in time for the next council meeting. The, I, I could not.
Yeah.
And, and do it even-handedly.
Thanks, Lisa.
Have it, are you good, Annie? Okay, I'll next we have Councilmember Fuller, and then back to Councilmember Severs.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Lisa, does, uh, OAC have any recommendation in this arena?
So, the reason why we were fast-tracking this was precisely because OAC did recommend that we get the restaurateur on sooner rather than later. And in fact, that was some of what we presented to the PRC as being, um, part of the process. So, um, at the end of the day, are we bound by what we said to PRC? We are not. Um, but it was, but this was part of the, this was part of the thinking in, in, um, in moving this quickly is the fact that we really wanted the restaurateur to be at the table, not at the end of the, the, uh, scoping process, but at the beginning of it.
Um, okay, so is there hearing what other council members are saying, is there a, a, a path forward to maybe answer some of these exploratory questions in a timely manner, going through what you just said, that would take probably a month?
I could, I could try and fast-track it. I could fa- try and fast-track it again. Um, uh, but I, I, but I do, I would need, I mean, you got to keep in mind, I need to have my council packet materials done ten days before the council meeting. Um, to get it run through the attorney, et cetera. Um, this was, this one was pretty challenging, and we were, and laid on this one. But the reality is that, um, that I think I could bring something back in a month. I don't think I can do something for your next council meeting.
Thank you.
Um, if we go back to Councilmember Severs, then we have Mayor Protem.
Uh, yes, I, uh, I guess I'm looking at it, I don't, I don't know that we need a true RFP or RFQ for this. I think, uh, my thought is that council just might need a little bit more, uh, consideration of who the, who else might qualify in this world. Um, and I understand it being a, a month-long process, but I think, I think a month-long process, if I'm hearing correctly, yes, we want to get this done quickly, want to get it done at the beginning of the process. But I guess I don't, I don't fully believe that we need to get it done tonight versus a month from now. And, and my assumption is that most of the, uh, uh, commercial brokers probably have some, have, have a number of restaurateurs that are, uh, sort of on the line, where they, they've got relationships out there and may have an idea of who they'll be contacting ahead of time. So, and, and I'm saying that as an assumption, again, my comments are purely out of ignorance, uh, and assumptions that uh, I was going to say, I don't think we need a formal RFP or RFQ to go out. I think council may need a little bit more time for consideration of who the competition is in this world.
Right, if I may, if I may, what I can do is I can reach out to the realtors in Liberty Lake. I can reach out to realtors, some realtors in, um, in the region that are commercial brokers, and simply ask for a marketing plan and, um, basically um, a list of the restaurants that they have worked with as, as a means of comparison.
Yeah, um, Mayor Protem, and then I'll, I'll kind of comment on what Lisa just said.
Uh, thank you for everybody's comments. I, I, this is a great process. You know, we're talking about it, we're trying to decide the importance and stuff. I want to go back on what, uh, Councilman Langford said. We've been working on this for years and years and years. And I can understand, Lisa, that it might take thirty days to probably get something on the agenda and stuff, but we've been working at this for a long period of time. What's interesting for me at least, once again, to further reiterate why I'm going to vote no, is that tonight's the first time I've heard about NAI Black. And what I would like to see, once again, to give people the option of saying no, what I'd like to see in a letter form that is sent from the city to these individuals. Now, they could verbally get back to us and say, we don't have an interest, and I would appreciate that. But at least they've had the opportunity, and I wouldn't see it in a letter form. I don't want to see just a phone call, you got an interest, no, to come back to me and say, no, we do not. I have to make a logical decision that's best for the citizens, and I can't do that if I don't get the sufficient information. And it doesn't help me in the eleventh hour to hear that there was one other company that might do something like this and not have something back from them. Thank you.
Councilmember Langford.
Final comment, ma'am. Lisa, thank you for your final comments. Okay, I believe that that is doable, at least it sounds eas- easy enough. But I know that it's going to require work on your part, and we thank you for it. But I do believe that, uh, that'll go a long way in making this process better. Thank you.
Great. And so, just one quick comment, and then process-wise, I want to hit Sean up on something before we take a vote. Um, so I, I just will note, um, so Mayor Protem and I talked a lot about this yesterday. So I, I did reach out to, um, our, one of our, our local, uh, real estate offices. Um, and actually, I got, got her information actually first online, and then I talked to somebody else in her office on just to make sure she was the right person to contact. We did have a good conversation today, and, um, in, in the end, you know, it was, well, yeah, um, she's got a little bit smaller reach versus, versus Bird, so she, that was, wouldn't have been something that she probably would have um, championed, you know, for herself, but she might be interested in bringing somebody to the table. So it's definitely worth having those conversations, and, you know, great conversation here. And I know, um, Councilmember Garcia, you've been kind of quiet. I want to give you an opportunity to, to weigh in since, uh, you haven't had the chance yet.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, I was, I was listening intently to all the deliberations from my colleagues. Um, and in the absence of, uh, in the absence of many people saying the importance of getting the citizens And in the absence of, in the absence of many people saying the importance of getting the citizens on board so they can kind of hear these presentations, if others come forward, we missed that opportunity. And then we create this government that's only government for the government. If we take every opportunity that we're taking now to find out about more, as member Severs has said and member Kennedy has said, we, Pro Tem Kennedy, we want to give everyone an advantage to tell us who's the right fit so when we choose that. But we need to, you know, there's that one extra step we keep missing. And I apologize to you all because it's not that you're trying to miss it, but I think we're missing opportunities to bring the citizens to the table, even to hear some of the presentations from some of these, these individual companies on what they want to offer. We cannot have them as the last resort. We need them in the mix and that's all that I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you give us two seconds, Councilmember Fuller? I want to get a process question to our city attorney. I'm pretty sure I saw him on here. Sean, can you hear me? Sean, I think that's your number. We can't hear you. Okay, hopefully he'll, go ahead, council member Fuller, while we're trying to get Sean on audio.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, having worked with our, the AOC group and their, their know-how on how to handle this project. Lisa, can we reach out to them and maybe see if we can get some feedback from them as well? They are a big part of this equation.
Absolutely.
And I think, I think the other thing, as a, as a, you know, this progresses as the parts come together. I think there's a, there's going to be a time and place for this involvement or input and discussion. I think there just has to be somebody that brings the options to the table. And I think that's what this type of offers, that fair assessment. Lisa?
I'm sorry.
Is it fair to say that a company like corporate brings all the potentials to the table so we can have a bigger discussion?
I'm sorry, you keep cutting out, Phil. I didn't hear, I didn't hear part of your question. Can somebody else repeat that?
Can everybody else hear me?
You were cutting out a little bit here and there.
Okay, sorry. So, I guess my question is, whether it's Bird or another company, is their intent to bring a pool of potential restaurants to the table so we can have a bigger discussion?
Yes, that's absolutely, that is absolutely the intent of this is to, is to go out to seek proposals from restaurants to then, to then provide, to provide the public with an opportunity to provide feedback and then ultimately to have city council select the restaurant to move forward with.
So, whether it's Bird or another company, there'd be more than one restaurant to discuss?
That, that is the intent. That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll try Sean one more time. Sean, can you hear me? I believe that's 9912 is you. All right, so, so I'm going to wing it on the process here. Somebody just didn't help me. So, I'm thinking at this point, it's probably a more proper action to maybe table this item than to vote on it and bring it back at it because it doesn't say, the action item specifically here doesn't say who. And we may end up voting on the one that's there anyway, but it would be more appropriate to table the, the motion and bring it back at the next meeting or... Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm hoping that the attorney will chime in on this. It's my understanding, council, correct me if I'm incorrect here, but there's a motion, there's a second. Can we actually table it? I think we still have to vote. Still have to vote and it could come back in the next meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, Sean, go ahead.
I think that was Hugh.
That was Hugh. I just said, I agree.
Okay, yeah.
Well, he said, well, so that my, the reason I'm trying to be cautious is because if it fails, then somebody on the failing end needs to be the one to bring it back at the, at a future meeting.
Which I think is no problem whatsoever.
I just want to make sure everybody understands what's going on. Okay. All right, go ahead, council member Kurtz.
Point of order, if the motion fails, is it, is it not the, to bring it back, is it not the people who voted in the affirmative, the winning party? I guess, if that makes sense?
All right, we don't run into this much, so let me...
Reconsideration, I think you have to...
Reconsideration, if it's no, somebody on the no side would need to bring it back.
Whatever the majority is.
Majority. There we go. Okay, yeah.
Okay. All right, I think we're good. Any more comments before we go to a vote? I don't see any. All right, those in favor of approving the professional service agreement for the broker?
Comment, Councilmember Fuller.
Yep, sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Fuller.
Yeah, so I guess I'm a little confused. Are we talking about tabling it or are we talking about voting on the motion?
Voting on the motion.
Motion.
And then if it, if it's, if the vote is no to approve it, somebody on the no side can bring it back for reconsideration or we have more information.
At the next meeting.
Yeah.
I apologize for speaking out of turn.
Point of order.
Yes. Go ahead. Councilmember Severs, go ahead.
My understanding would be that this is a specific professional services agreement tonight. The next professional services agreement would be a completely separate vote, not the one tonight. Meaning, if we deliberate over multiple entities that we might engage at a future council meeting, that'd be a separate vote. So, if, if for instance, it happens to be unanimous tonight, that'd be a different professional services agreement at a future date and it'd be okay to just bring it back as a separate vote. Maybe we need a attorney weigh in.
And that's what I'm trying. Sean, can you hear us? Jen, could you do, could you do me a favor while we're doing this? Can you try to get Sean on the phone?
I tried texting him. I tried texting him. Let me try and call him.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor, are you there?
Yes. Oh, there you are. Hi, Sean.
Sorry.
So, we're trying to make sure that we get this process down correctly so we don't have any errors.
Sure. So, I missed the last part of it. What was that?
Okay, so, quick synopsis. We have a motion on the floor in the second to vote on the professional services agreement in front of us.
Right.
If that, if that, if that fails tonight and then the next one to come back in front of us, A, if it's the same agreement, then somebody from the no side could bring the same agreement back. Or if it's a different agreement, then that could, would be a separate motion with a different agreement attached, correct?
I think, I think what you're saying is correct. So, if it was the same agreement, it would be someone who voted against it. If it was a different agreement, then it would be a new agreement to be voted upon by the entire council.
Perfect. That's where we landed. I just want to make sure. We'll look, see two moving parts here tonight, so just wanted to confirm. All right, listen, that's great. We'll go ahead. Go ahead, Councilmember Fuller.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And then what, what would be the plus or minus of tabling it?
Sean, that's for you.
Yeah, can we...
Plus, plus or minus, I mean, if there's a motion, if, if there's a motion in second, then there would be a vote on it. So, there would be a vote on the agreement. And then to the extent of what that is, I mean, you could take a separate motion if you wanted to table it. You'd have to vote on the table motion. And if it was passed that way, then you would table it to that date or whenever that would be for the next city council meeting.
Okay, but, but then there would not be a vote on the actual agreement? Just be a vote to table?
Not, 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 not on the main motion, right. So, if you had, if you just had a motion and a second as far as approval of the agreement, if there was a subsequent motion to table it to a different date and a second and a vote, you'd take that vote first. And if that was accepted as far as approved, then there wouldn't be a motion on the approval of the agreement.
So, I will go back to the original motion maker with regards to whether you want to make an additional motion to table it or you want to move to the vote.
I think it's a great idea. Allow me to ask one question.
One second, Sean. Go ahead, Sean.
No, I don't think you'd add. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard somebody. And I do see Councilmember Pro Tem's hand up and so is Hugh's.
Mayor, I motioned to table action item B, number three, to a future council meeting.
Second.
Okay, all right. So, we have a motion in the second to table action item B3 to the next meeting.
Discussion.
Discussion.
To a future meeting. It may not be, it may not be the next meeting, but a future meeting.
Got it. Got it. And we have a second by Councilmember Garcia, I believe, and now more discussion. Council, Mayor Pro Tem.
Sean, clarification, please. If we table this to come up later on, does it have to come back the same, the same presentation? What happens if, so, and there's two companies?
No, you're just, you're just pushing the disagreement to another, to another meeting. So, if you didn't bring the same, yes, correct.
Yep, thank you. You answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the tabling?
Point of order.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Severs.
Is it this, so, I'm sorry, I'm not clear. Is, in a future meeting, is it the same agreement, the same company that we're voting on at a future meeting? Or could it be a professional services agreement for broker with a different broker if we so chose after we deliberated on it?
Well, Sean, it's your first and I see Lisa's hand.
Man, I think, I think, I think the motion that was, correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion was to continue this agreement to another meeting and that was second and that, that's the motion. So, to the extent that that's the motion, you would bring that meeting forward. If you wanted to bring a different agreement forward, then you could certainly do that. But with regard to, we're just talking about this specific agreement.
I remove my motion.
So, Mayor, if I may, I can't bring back multiple contracts. What we, what I would propose to do is to report back to you at the next meeting with no contracts on the table for you to then deliberate on that. And I would bring back to the council meeting on November 4th the, the firm that you have directed me to bring forward, if that makes sense.
All right, so let me do a quick summary and, boy, Kelsey, your first meeting. Yeah, so, so we have had a, the maker of the motion to take, for tabling has rescinded his motion. So, we are back to...
Correct, original motion.
The original motion about to vote on whether to approve the agreement or not. I do see Councilmember Garcia's hand up and Councilmember Kurtz.
I moved to table the motion until Director Lisa Key is able to bring back information regarding the professional service agreement for broker to our attention for discussion.
Second.
And who was that? Councilmember Severs? One second. So, we have a new motion to table until, oh, boy, I'm starting to lose track here. I wish I had a white notebook in front of me, you guys. We have a new motion in the second. Councilmember Severs, was that you seconding? I just want to make sure I got the right voice.
Correct.
Okay, to, and Councilmember Garcia, help me through this, to table this action item B3 until after Lisa brings back the additional information for us to decide and then bring back, then after that, to vote on it?
Correct.
Like if...
Correct.
Okay. All right, discussion on that table. Okay, we'll just go ahead, go ahead and call for a vote because I don't see any hands up. So, we'll go ahead and we're voting on the motion to table this item until after Lisa brings back other items for us to consider. And for safety purposes, I'm going to ask you all to raise your hands when you vote. All of those in favor, please raise your hands and keep them up there for a moment. Those in favor of tabling, so we have one, two, we have a, I'm just writing down here real quick. All right, and Hugh. And are those opposed to tabling? Okay, Kelsey, I'll get you the names in case you didn't get them. So, we have five in favor of tabling the motion. That would be Councilmembers Garcia, Fuller, Rep. Tim Kennedy, Councilmember Langford, Councilmember Severs, and two opposed, Councilmember Kurtz and Councilmember Dunn. Whew, I think that is the first time in 12 years we've seen here we've had someone to do.
Very good.
Interesting. Okay, wow.
Almost like we went through some Robert's Rules of Orders recently.
Well, well, well done, guys. Good night, mate, taken to the test tonight. All right, so, let's get back to the agenda. Public areas in the field, Lisa. Do we have any? I don't believe so, but can you confirm? Because the agenda does not note it. Okay, I'm assuming now. Resolutions. Kelsey or Kyle, are you taking this?
I can take it. So, we have resolution, sorry. Resolution number 21-290, a resolution providing for the disposal of certain inventory items deemed to be surplus to the reasonably foreseeable needs of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution number 21-290.
In the second?
Second, second.
Okay, you have a second from Councilmember Dunn? Question or questions? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving resolution number 21-290, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, aye's habit, seven zero. Resolution 21-290 passes. Next.
We have a resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, adopting an amended job description for the position of city administrator.
We have a second, motion?
Make a motion. I make a motion to approve resolution number 12-155A.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Severs. Any discussion or questions? I believe the only changes we made was clarifying residency and the driver's license requirement. It used to say it had to have a Washington driver's license, so we know things changed. So, that now just says driver's license requirement. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Only one question and I read it and I, I might have failed to pick this up, so council can correct me on this or somebody can, on the requirements for the city administrator. On, we have all the requirements and then for the education and stuff. Do we have on there that we strive to get somebody who is certified? I'm not sure if that's the right verbiage or not, but I know that there is a certification for administrators. And what my thought is this, if we ask that, if that's one of our requirements, if it can't be done, at least we've asked for it.
Or add preferred. And I don't even know if Katie has, has that designation. Jen, do you know?
No, I've never seen it anywhere and I, I don't want to say I don't think she does, but I haven't seen anything like that.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, where this, where actually this has brought to my attention is that recently, and also a year or two ago, uh, the mayor and I were in a, uh, mayor's meeting and stuff, and some of the presentations, a couple of the individuals, well, I think one was from Tacoma, has a certification on it, and Katie has brought that up in the past, in the past. One, it would be great to ask for that, but I'm one of these that, somebody could have certification, but they don't have the experience, then I'm going to go toward somebody with the experience. But I think it's important if we ask that, uh, at least we're requesting that. If we can't fulfill it, we could go on.
So, go ahead, Councilmember Langford. I was going to say, I just did a, did a, a quick search, since I'm, I'm, I'm not very familiar with, with that designation. So it's the I C M, I C M A, um, and it is, I was just, just like a lot of the other professional designations, a, a combination of, of, um, classes, tests, education, and experience. Um, so I, I personally don't have any, um, concerns about adding it as a desire, um, so that, you know, but I'd like to obviously hear from everybody else. Councilmember Langford?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, yeah, kind, yeah, I like, I like the idea of having certified people, because at least they've gone through the rigors of getting certified for their profession, which I think is always surplus. Secondly, uh, do we have, uh, outlined or requested a specific amount of time served in that profession?
I believe, believe it's in there, I don't have it in front of me.
I think, yeah, it is in there.
Yeah.
Do you know what that time is?
Five years?
Five years.
Yeah.
Five years as a city administrator?
Or, or equal
Or experience.
Or equal experience, city manager, city administrator.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Severs, I see your hand up, and then Councilmember Foyer.
Yeah, I just want to recognize the difficulty in hiring people and, um, and the idea that perhaps our current city administrator may or may not have the certification, who's done excellent job. I, I, I do recognize credentials, and I think that they're very important, but I don't want to make this a specific requirement. I'd rather leave, uh, a candidate's, um, history and qualifications and experience on the table, and leave it more to council, who is going to confirm this, and mayor to, um, uh, appoint this person, uh, rather than calling out this specific credential.
Thank you for your comment. Councilmember Foyer, then Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As I read the second sentence, it says a master's degree is preferred, it doesn't say it's required, and so I would think that that's, insert the certification that, um, seems to come to the surface, which I would attend to agree with. And, um, if Katie doesn't have the certification, she better get after it.
Maybe we can give her an honorary as, as one of the conditions of release.
That's going to threaten her job, her job security.
All right, um, okay, great, I'll, uh, Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, you are next.
Uh, no comment, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Hugh, is your hand back up, or did you not take it down?
No, my apologies, I didn't take it down.
Yep, okay, I just don't want to miss you. Okay, so, um, there's not many comments on this, um, so I'm going to, uh, I'll just say if, um, here, if there's no objections, we will make that something we look for in the resume, um, and carefully consider that on, on the applications, but not make it a requirement or preferred at this time. We don't want to exclude some applicants that might not
The third problem is, is that, you know, and I'm not saying in this particular incident, okay? I come from a background where everything has changed, changed, changed when it comes to labor laws, et cetera, okay? And if we set out there a, a very low, low bar, you're going to find people to fill it.
Yeah.
Okay? If we set a very high bar, you may or may not have people to fill it, but everybody knows what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Okay? So I would rather have the bar high, don't have it filled, reissue it, and maintain a high standard than just filling the position to say it's filled.
Yeah, that's, that's not what we want to do.
Don't think we are.
No. Um, all right, so any objection to adding, adding the I C M A certification as preferred?
Yes, I have objection to that. Or pref- preferred, no. Required, yes.
Oh, so you're looking for, make it re, the I C M A required?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I misspoke. Uh, preferred, yes.
Okay, any other comments? So I'll take, um, so, and so I will go about this again, just kind of a, a show, an official show of hand, well
No, official.
Yeah, yeah, official show of hand, just to see, uh, oh, too many votes tonight, um, to see, um, if there's any objections to making that, um
We'll pass the resolution, please.
Yeah, exactly, yes. So any objection to adding that the I C M A preferred when we go to, um, to vote on this? No objections, okay. So we had a motion and a second by Hugh, um
I make a motion that we amend the resolution number twelve-one-five-five, rules of verbiage described during the conversation.
Thank you, we have a second.
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 Okay, do we have any further discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor of adding the I C M A designation preferred on the job description, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so we have amended, we will be amending that, and then we will go to a vote on the overall job description, including that adjustment, all in favor of approving. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I guess who seconded that, um, motion to amend?
So, of course, the one I didn't write, write down. Hugh, was that Hugh?
I, I seconded, so does Mayor Pro Tim. I was the guy first.
Pick, pick, pick either Mayor Pro Tim or Councilmember Severs. Councilmember Langford made the, uh, motion.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, all those in favor of approving the amendment resolution twelve dash one-five-five A, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, looks like I have seven hands up. Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. We have ourselves an updated job description. Ordinances, I don't see any. No emergency ordinances, um, now introduction of upcoming agenda items. We've got the updated matrix in our, in, in our packet for October fifth, that was tonight, huh? For, there, boy, how time flies when we're having fun. Uh, so we don't have anything scheduled going forward, so our next meeting is the sixteenth. Uh, I know we had a couple things hit our plates tonight, um, I guess my first question would be, um, around the capital facilities plan. I heard mostly that everyone wanted to have a workshop on the capital facilities plan. We have six o'clock open on the nineteenth. Is there any objections to taking another look at the capital facilities plan then? Or Lisa, is that too soon on your side?
We absolutely could. I, I won't have the new format in place, but, um, I, I think probably the more important thing is to get feedback from council and to hear their thoughts.
Any, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, no objection, but I do have additional question.
Sure.
Do we, do we have a plan for our next meeting, resolution number twelve-one-five-six? Do you finalize that?
Which, oh, that's our, um, rules of procedure.
Okay, great, thank you. That's the only question I have.
No more workshops on that.
Absolutely.
Rules of procedure. All right, so that's six o'clock. Um, Jen, do you have anything that we may have missed, um, that we might have for seven?
Yeah, I thought I would mention, um, what about the Code of Ethics workshop?
Code of Ethics?
Yeah, there's a request to, uh, to have a, another workshop on that after our last meeting. Is council prepared to maybe talk about that during seven o'clock? Do remember, I can't remember what was on our agenda for next week, we didn't go over it too, too much last, um, this morning during agenda review, but I know I am presenting the budget, so I want to make sure that we have time for everything. Um, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, who is requesting that? Is that a continue, and that's just a continuation of the discussion?
Yeah, Councilmember Kurtz had asked that we continue that one.
Very good, thank you.
So we want to TBD that one?
Yeah, let's put on there, um, TBD, Councilmember Kurtz, I know you had, you had asked about putting that, um, on a workshop, is there, do we have, um, three people to put that on for a future workshop?
Do we need three people? I think for a special meeting, we need three people, but I think we only need one for the agenda. Um, I think at the last meeting, we had talked about getting the red line out, I asked, I emailed Katie, they announced that she was out, um, and I asked Jen if she could send out the electronic version of it, so that we can redline it and get it back like we talked about last week. Um, so I, I want to be cognizant that we do have budget capital facilities, but I also don't want to forget it either.
Yeah.
So, as far as what makes sense, I don't know if, um, the, the first meeting in November would make sense or not. Um, I don't have the, um, agenda items up in front of me.
So, so real quick, Kelsey, I believe I saw an email from you about, um, the, the format that, to get some comments back from the council. Was that the one I saw?
Yes, we have the Word version for the Code of Ethics and social media policy, so we can distribute that if we're in agreement of what kind of format we want to get everybody's input on and bring it back.
So, so looking at the calendar, um, I think it, of course, everybody else weighing in, I think it makes sense to do the social media at the next meeting, because once I, once I present the budget, that's going to be all-consuming, um, maybe even special meetings. So if we don't do it on the nineteenth, it probably will get kicked to January.
Nineteenth sounds fabulous.
Anybody opposed to putting, putting that on the seven o'clock workshop?
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, January.
Oh, it's going to be gone.
Hey, Phil, be quiet.
All right, so we have Code of Ethics, seven o'clock, um, workshop on the nineteenth. Uh, what other ones came up today?
Um, the only other one I have was the ordinance to clean up, uh, for the positions, for the police, uh, city administrator and directors.
I don't think that would take very long.
No.
I know Sean still needs, we, we still need time to finish it up, and Sean needs to review, we could probably put that on for eleven-four, it won't take very long, even at the seven o'clock. And then we'll probably have a budget workshop at, at six o'clock on the fourth. Does that sound amiable to everybody? Kyle, go ahead.
All right, uh, so I just, we'll, we would probably have a very, very brief workshop on the ARP nonprofit discussion. We are, we're on the home stretch here, so I, I don't imagine it would take up very much time.
Okay, so how about, so on ten nineteen, capital facilities plan at six, at seven, Code of Ethics and the ARP, eleven-four, tentatively, six o'clock budget, and seven o'clock, um, or the ordinance confirmations workshop on, on the merged, um, ordinances. Does that sound good, everybody? All right, so that gives us the next couple of meetings for us.
And I have a few items, uh, for the upcoming agenda, for, um, agenda items. Uh, we have Legacy Ridge West, second edition. We have a donation from CTC Electric for council's, uh, review and approval. We have a snow blade, uh, snow plow blade purchase. We have an X-Mark Staris purchase. We have the personnel manual, which will be coming to, I believe, in its completed format, and a sidewalk grinding contract, all for October nineteenth.
Wow, lots of things to go, no tabling and none of that stuff. All right. Okay, so, uh, we do have, do we have, else have any other upcoming agenda items? We do have several citizen comments here, and I will go in order, um, that I got the, take Todd for keeping track of, um, where, then we got the requests. So first, we have Tim Olson, just a reminder, you guys have three minutes, and the countdown clock will be on the screen.
Thank you, Mary, can you hear me okay?
We can.
I just want to mention that, uh, I think, uh, Councilmember Oden is on fire tonight. I think we need to listen to what he had to say earlier. At Trailhead, we're building a golf course with a restaurant. We're not building a restaurant with a golf course. I would encourage council to consider looking around and considering all the other options that are out there. I have no disrespect towards bird whatsoever. I'm a residential real estate specialist, and the only thing I know is that I don't do commercial. Commercial's very specific, and I want to encourage you all to please listen to some other opportunities to be able to do this. I don't know what the rush is, I don't know the process well enough, but I just want to say thank you, Miss, uh, Mr. Oden, uh, for, uh, bringing that up, because I think it's very, very important as we continue to evaluate things here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Ms. Steve Pearson.
Yeah, Mayor, council, uh, just had great discussion tonight. Uh, lots of things came up. I think one of the things you need to really look at is a projection of, uh, funds through the next six years as to an expense and revenue. But aside from that, I wanted to welcome David Williams, because your plate is full. You have lots to do, so welcome aboard, and, uh, we hope you do an excellent job. Thanks, David, for stepping up.
We will have a six-year forecast as part of the budget process. Thank you. Uh, Jamie Baird.
Thank you, council, uh, for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I appreciate your deliberation regarding the budget. I know it's no small undertaking. Uh, my thought on that would be to make sure that we are involving the community. I hear a lot about council's priorities when it comes to the budget. I hear very little about the community's priorities. While it may be a little late in this year's budget process, one thing I would urge you to consider, especially with the formation of the Community Engagement Commission, is think about ways that you can involve the community to hear what they think is important to be funded, um, in next year's budget. I would love to see things like town halls in different communities or neighborhoods within Liberty Lake, um, or other ways, perhaps with thought exchange that, uh, Councilmember Dunn shared, of ways for the community to provide feedback, but informed feedback. They need to know what these projects could cost, uh, what would require additional funding revenue, um, so that they can make an informed choice or an informed opinion about these. So I really urge you guys to think about ways to involve the community when it comes to budgeting priorities. Additionally, um, a concern that I have is that, uh, last week's meeting, um, the video of that session has yet to be posted to the city's website, and I would just, uh, strongly urge that any recording of any meeting, any public meeting, is added to the city's website in as timely a manner as possible to further engage the community and provide that transparency. Thank you again for your work.
Thank you, Jamie, appreciate it. Okay, if there are no other citizen comments, Todd, anybody else? All right, I guess we are done with citizen comments. Next, we do have an executive session. Before we go there, it is about twenty till ten. Councilmember Langford, do you think twenty minutes is enough time, or should we, uh, take a vote to extend the meeting just in case?
Would you take the vote? Let's just extend some.
Sure. If you want, you want to go ahead and make the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we extend the meeting until about ten fifteen.
Okay, so you have a motion to extend the meeting till ten fifteen?
Second.
You have a second? Okay, you have a second from Councilmember Severs. Now, remember, in order for this to pass, if we don't have our updated rules, this does need to be unanimous. Um, so all in favor of extending the meeting till, um, possibly ten fif, to ten fifteen, please raise your hand. All right, I have seven out of seven. Any opposed? All right, so we do, we have the unanimous vote to extend the meeting to ten fifteen. Um, so, uh, to, to the public, we, um, we will be adjourning into executive session to discuss additional security matters for RCW forty-two dot thirty dash one-ten, um, as we did last week. Um, we will be, have no decisions made in that session, and when we come back out, we will adjourn. Um, so council members, check your calendars, there is an executive meeting invite in, uh, sorry, check your email, there's a calendar invite for the executive session, so we will, um, join there in five minutes, and we will adjourn no later than ten fifteen. Thanks, everybody, for participating tonight. Thanks, David, and we'll see you in City Hall soon.